I would like to call our city council meeting to order for October tenth, twenty eighteen. We're going to start with a pledge of allegiance that will be led by Dave Mailer.
Will the audience please raise, give the proper salute to the flag, and we pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
Thank you, Dave. We have two presentations this evening. The first one is an update from Jen Atwood. Jen, I, oh, okay, she's not here, we've got a substitute. So why don't you come up, introduce yourself, and go.
Mayor Writing, council members, staff, citizens of West Jordan, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I am not Jen Atwood, she's much better looking than I am. My name is Bryce Dunford, I am a member of the Board of Education for Jordan School District. I represent southwest corner of West Jordan, from Copper Hills High School down to Columbia Elementary School. It is a pleasure to represent West Jordan citizens. As you recall, about two years ago, November of two thousand sixteen, the citizens of the district approved a bond to build six new schools. One of those is the rebuild of West Jordan Middle School, which is progressing nicely. Another is a new high school in Harriman, which is coming along. Two other new middle schools, one in Bluffdale, one in South Jordan, and then two other elementary schools, both in Harriman and in Bluffdale. Five of those schools will open next summer in two thousand nineteen. One of them will open in the following summer, two thousand twenty, the middle school in Bluffdale. Because of that, as you may be aware, we are changing boundaries. We are under a massive boundary change. We affectionately call it MOAB, short for Mother of All Boundary Changes. Potentially every school in our district will be affected. We have previously sent you a packet which you should have received that shows where we are in the process. We would direct your attention to the website, boundaries.jordandistrict.org. That's where we keep everything boundary oriented. The challenge we face in West Jordan is that in east West Jordan, we have shrinking schools. West Jordan High School is a thousand students under capacity. Joel P. Jensen is three hundred students under capacity. Majestic Elementary School will most likely close. They are down to two hundred students with a shrinking population. We will move those students into West Jordan Elementary School and repurpose that building. Then on the west side of West Jordan is a completely different story. We have very overcrowded schools. Copper Hills High School is near capacity, there are students who don't receive a locker because we don't have enough. Sunset Ridge Middle School is four hundred students over capacity. Oak Crest Elementary School, Fox Hollow are over capacity. That is the challenge we face in West Jordan. We have shrinking schools on one side and overcrowded schools on the other. Shifting them is not such an easy task, as you know. We have barriers like airports, Mountain View corridors, Bangor highways. The challenge we face is how do we alleviate the overcrowding and not displace students further than we need to? We commit to you to do our very best. It will be absolutely impossible to make everyone happy. Someone is going to be displaced further than they would like to. Someone's going to have to walk past a closer school to get to their boundary school. It's just not likely that we're going to be able to alleviate the overcrowding without someone needing to walk further. We will do our very best to minimize those that walk, but we are going to need your help in establishing safe walking routes and SNAP plans so that those students will arrive safely to school. We commit to you to do the very best we can to balance that. Just to let you know our time period, we have submitted two proposals. You should find them on your packet. The essence of proposal A is to create long-lasting boundaries. Long-term boundaries that don't need to be changed quickly. That's the gist of A. A is the most aggressive at changing boundaries because we want longer-lasting results. The gist of proposal B is to, where possible, and it's not fully possible in our district, but where possible in our district, to align feeder systems. So that you go to middle school and high school with the same group of people. Try to keep people together. That's the gist of proposal B. Please know that it's never A or B. It's here's A and B, and then open it up for a whole lot of public comment, which then results in option C. And then we open that up to a whole lot of public comment, which hopefully ends in a decision D. So right now, we are very early in the process, we are holding open houses at all of the major high schools. In fact, right now, tonight, is an open house at West Jordan High School. We have a public hearing scheduled for October twenty-third. We are listening, we are taking notes, and then we will make a proposed final draft that we then turn to public opinion, public input for more expressions of what they would like. And then we will make a final decision, hopefully around November thirteenth. So as you can see, nothing is set in stone. But we just wanted to come tonight and let you know where we were with boundary changes and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members for the school board? Councilmember Anderson?
I just want to thank you for the efforts the board is making at listening to the patrons of the school district and the neighborhoods. And sometimes it kind of feels like it's the Hunger Games between neighborhoods as they position themselves for what's important to their families. But I don't envy the hard decisions that you've got to make, but I do appreciate your efforts.
Coming from a fellow elected officer, that means a lot.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilman Bland?
Thank you, Mayor. One question I've had from citizens is if this change happens next year, if their son or daughter is in eleventh grade, does the boundary change make them go to a different high school? I know that answer's probably not ready just yet, but...
Nope, I'm ready.
Okay.
By law, Utah offers open enrollment. As long as a school is under ninety percent capacity, you can permit back. Knowing that, we are very confident that not a single this year's junior who would like to stay at their current school would be denied a permit. Now, we can't come out and say that's definitive because we've got a Harriman High School that's very crowded. But as we've done the numbers, our highest priority in offering permits would be to allow eleventh graders to stay at the school and graduate from the school they've been attending. We are very confident that, I don't think there's a scenario possible where an eleventh grader would not receive a permit who wanted to stay. That may not be true of tenth graders and below, but seniors, we are giving highest priority to. You're welcome.
Senior questions, we thank you very much for coming to visit with us about that. And I know that it's been on a long people's mind.
Thank you.
The next presentation we have is a presentation regarding ranked choice voting. Corey Holdaway is here for that. And I might just say that when I first saw this, it was at the Utah League of Cities and Towns Conference a few weeks back. And Mr. Holdaway has asked that he have the opportunity to come and explain to our city council what this is about as well. So with that, we will turn the time over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Writing. Yes, Corey Holdaway. To begin with, what I would like to do is I'd like to ask the council if they can tell me when, if you had to have a primary, when would that primary be held? Can you tell me that?
Mayor?
In August.
Yeah, it's usually in August, but when would we like it to be held, or when is it held by state law?
Just, when is it held?
Well, for municipal races, it's held in August.
Okay. And the reason I ask that question, or I begin my presentation with that, is because it varies depending upon where you live from one place to another as to when that primary election is held. If you were to implement ranked choice voting, primary elections go away. You only have one election cycle, and that election cycle is at the general election. So I want to preface my comments with that. I've got a presentation I want to talk to you a little bit about. House Bill thirty-five was a bill that was passed this past legislative session. It was sponsored by, well, before I go there, it was a bill that had been presented for a couple of years prior to that. The first year that it was presented, it was presented to be statewide for all general elections, all elections, basically. They scaled it back this past legislative session. By the way, that bill passed the House and didn't receive a vote in the Senate. This bill passed this past legislative session. And let's go to the next slide if we could. Let me tell you what the bill does. It creates a pilot program, beginning in January one of this next year, to allow municipalities to use ranked choice voting for their municipal elections. There's an opt-out process that's established in the bill. It also goes through very definitively how the counting takes place and in the event that there's a tie and all of that. So it's very prescriptive in terms of the legislation. There's also a sunset date that's in the bill of two thousand twenty-six so that the legislature's forced to reexamine whether or not this pilot is something that they want to continue. Let's go to the next slide. House Bill thirty-five, it was a bipartisan bill. And if you look at the bill sponsors, Representative Mark Roberts, if you know anything about the Utah Legislature, Mark Roberts is about as far right as you can be in philosophy, as far as politics go. Representative Chavez Hauck, who sponsored the bill in the past, is about as far left as you can be. One's a Democrat, one's a Republican. It's not a Republican or a Democrat issue. This is just a process issue in terms of how elections are to be operated. You can see by the support, there were only two negative votes that the bill received as it was presented. Those were because the bill didn't go far enough. They wanted more processes for cities to be able to allow elections to be held. So you can see that it was very well-received in the legislature. Let's go to the next slide. People ask, if we use ranked choice voting, what are the benefits? Let me just go over those quickly, and I know my time is short. Number one benefit that I got involved with this for is voter engagement. I belong to a group, actually, I'm on a board for a group, and this is how I got acquainted with this during the legislative session. The group is Voterize, and it's a group dedicated to mobilizing the young vote. Generation X, Generation Z, trying to get more people, young people, to vote. The Voterize Board took a position of support for using, or for House Bill thirty-five because they felt like it was an innovative way to energize the electorate. Also, one of the benefits is where it's been tried in other places in the country, what they've found is that the campaigns for election become much more civil. And the reason is, in ranked choice voting, if Councilman Anderson and Councilman Jacob and I were running for the same position, we would not want to rein on one another's voters in terms of negative campaigning. We would be trying to get our guys to vote for us, but we'd also be trying to appeal to one another's voters so that if we didn't get the number one vote, we'd at least get the number two. Cost savings, and this is where cities kind of sit up and pay attention. As I said, if ranked choice voting is adopted, there is no need to have a primary election. So the costs of running a primary election, which can be, depending on the size of the city, fairly substantial. In fact, contracting for running an election, I'm told, is in the neighborhood of two dollars per registered vote per election. This was an amount that was quoted to me from the county clerk, Sherri Swenson. So that when a city wants to contract with the county, which they generally do, they're not forced to, but by, what's common now, is the county contracts their services to run their elections. They'll charge the city a certain amount. That amount is generally in the neighborhood of two dollars per registered voter. So depending upon West Jordan, I'm not sure what the registered voter count is. Maybe Melanie has that.
Approximately forty-seven thousand.
So forty-seven thousand times two, you're looking in the neighborhood of ninety thousand dollars if you have to run a primary election that you could save. So there's significant cost savings if you were to implement ranked choice voting. Let's go to the next slide. How a ballot works, I've given, in fact, you should each have one of these on your desk. This is kind of a sample of what a ballot could look like. We had these at the League of Cities and Towns just for fun. In terms of ranked choice voting for pie and cake, just a matter of information, apple pie won, but not by a lot. You can see it's fairly straightforward as an electorate. You choose by basically looking down the choices of candidates, pecan, blueberry, apple, pumpkin. Well, my number one choice here would be pumpkin. My number two choice would be apple, pecan third, and blueberry fourth. So it's not an overly complex process that the voter has to understand. Voters rank their choices in order of preference. Visual and written instructions are provided so that it's clear to the voter what needs to take place. Let's go to the next slide. As the electorate makes their choices, how this works is if, the fifty percent threshold is the magic number, a majority vote. So if, in the first round of balloting, if a candidate, in our example, if apple were to receive fifty percent of the vote in the first round of balloting, the election's over. Apple is our choice. If it receives less than fifty percent, whatever candidate receives the fewest number of votes is dropped off, and their second-place vote then comes into play. And they then go to either one of the other two choices, or three choices, whatever it happens to be. This process happens in the same way for out-large positions. I know you've got some districts that are defined, but you also have out-large. In fact, a lot of cities, largely, their whole city council is out-large. It's just flipped in the other way around so that once in an out-large position, once somebody hits fifty percent, they then become one of the elected, and you go through until another person hits the fifty percent threshold. So it's fairly straightforward in terms of the counting as well. Let's go to the next slide. Implementing ranked choice voting, what's involved and what will it cost? This is where we run into a little bit of a challenge. In fact, I won't say a little bit, it's a big challenge here in Salt Lake County. Salt Lake County has taken the position that they will not run an election using ranked choice voting in the next municipal election at this point. That could change going forward, who knows? But in fact, I just talked with Sherri Swenson this afternoon about this. And she's saying that they just don't have the hardware to be able to do this. When I've presented her with some information regarding the ability to still use the legacy equipment that they've got, she's still a little reluctant to do it. So we're running into a little bit of a challenge there. However, that's not to say that if a city wants to do this, they can't do this on their own. They could contract with somebody else to run that. And I'm sure Mrs. Briggs is not overly excited about me bringing that up. But it could be something that could happen if a city, if West Jordan were to want to do this. As an example, Utah County, the county clerk in Utah County has embraced this. The cities down there, some of the cities down there are likely going to be doing this in two thousand nineteen. There are a few cities in Salt Lake County that are interested in this, that we've made the presentations to. But we've still, we've got a little bit of a challenge with regard to the existing equipment. I apologize, my phone is ringing and I need to turn it off. If the county were to adopt this... Sorry, there we go, doggone iPhones. If the county were to adopt this, there would be a setup fee of ten thousand dollars, which would be shared across the municipalities. But you can see, if you were to save the cost, even if West Jordan were to do this, and it were a ten thousand dollar cost, you'd still be in the black if you had to run a primary election. So we don't see the cost as being overly burdensome. There would be some training that would also need to be required, or we would recommend. But that, again, would be dependent upon the city's wishes as far as that training goes. Let's go to the next slide. I know I'm running out of time. This just gives you the math in terms of what it would cost, what it would save. Let's skip this one. Implementing ranked choice voting. RCV, the equipment outside of Salt Lake County is available and ready to go. Salt Lake County, we do have some glitches that would need to work through. But again, if the clerk is unwilling to do it, then the city would need to do some contracting outside. We've thought that maybe Utah County would be willing to contract their services for cities outside of, or within Salt Lake County if you had interest. And again, if that's something that West Jordan is interested in, I would be happy to help kind of make that happen or explore that as an option. Ranked choice voting, we see it as complementing the vote-by-male process. Again, it's about just informing the voter and voter engagement. Let's go to the next slide. Skip this one, this is just ballot design. ESNS ballot design used in Maine, this was the one used in Maine. I know I'm out of time, so let's skip this. Santa Fe's example, skip this. This is some ideas of how you could train or educate your electorate. You could do bill inserts for the water bills in terms of just informing your constituents. There would be an opportunity for some civic club presentations. Maine did this statewide without a budget. Santa Fe did it, and they had set aside a hundred thousand dollars to educate their electorate. So you've got the spectrum of somebody that doesn't put any money into it and just does it on a shoestring to the Cadillac model of educating. And again, that would be something that we would be happy to help with implementing. Let's go to the next slide. Let's go, that's, we've talked about this. This is where some ideas of where it's been tried and where it's going on currently across the country. To be totally transparent, Utah, we have not done this in an election. We have done it at a party level in elections. When I was running in the legislature, there was some of this being done, at least in the Republican Party, in terms of ranked choice voting. It was done a little bit differently because you had to do it by ballot each time rather than going through and ranking them just all at once. But it was done. Let's go to the next slide. So if West Jordan is interested in doing this, I know this is a new concept, but we would hope that somebody takes this on and gives this a try and discovers the benefits that we think there are to using ranked choice voting. If you were to do this, you would need to pass a resolution as a city council that you're interested in doing this. I've got sample resolutions if you'd like, I'm sure Mr. Wall could put one together as well. You need to let, that resolution then would ask your clerk to notify the lieutenant governor's office by January one, two thousand nineteen, that ranked choice voting is something that you want to use in the coming election and that you have the capability to have that happen for West Jordan. With that, I would be open to any questions that you might have.
Councilman Burt?
Thank you, Mayor. As a person who has run campaign more than once, that would be very cost-saving to just do a campaign once instead of twice.
Absolutely.
However, my concern is I want to make sure that the public has plenty of opportunity to vent the candidates and have information when they're voting. And when you go through a primary first, it's like it gives them an extra opportunity to learn more about those who are running for that position than otherwise. So are you envisioning that the campaign will last longer if there's multiple people on this type of a...
There would be a different way of campaigning, certainly, depending upon using ranked choice voting. Your ability to appeal to your voter would, I mean, you're going to want to be able to reach out to as many voters and let them know who you are, what you stand for, and why you want them to vote for you. So we see that as, short answer to the question is yes. It may have the campaign cycle last a little bit longer, but generally, people start campaigning the first part of September and go through until November for the general elections. At least that's been traditionally what has happened. I don't see it going beyond the September.
And do you see this going more than just municipalities? Do you see state doing this?
Maine has adopted this statewide.
Well, that's like a county.
County? I want to be careful how I answer that because there was a bill that passed the House that was statewide. It went to the Senate, and they weren't able to take it up. However, that's not to say, given how overwhelmingly this bill passed, that's not to say that going forward, if no city takes this up, who knows what the legislature does?
Have you run a campaign yourself?
I have. Six.
Six.
I was a legislator for six terms.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you. I just had one question as far as the county's participation is concerned. You said that Salt Lake County has opted not to participate in two thousand nineteen.
At this point, in two thousand nineteen.
Is that the clerk's decision exclusively, or is the county council involved in that decision? I'm just wondering where that responsibility lies and who we would go lobby to if we wanted to help encourage that.
That's a great question, Councilman Jacob. I've had conversations with the county council, at least members of the county council, about this. And they felt like that this was the clerk's decision, this is their bailiwick. However, we feel like that if the county council were to take a resolution and offering support for this, it would put additional pressure on the clerk's office. Again, and if the cities are interested in this, making that inquiry, that's a big part of having the ball moved down the field.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. And can I follow up with you, Mayor, in the next week or two after you've had a chance to digest this a little bit?
Oh, you bet. We'll discuss that and see where it goes.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much for the opportunity and good luck tonight.
Thank you. Well, now move to our communications with the city manager and staff reports, so, uh, city attorney, Mr. Wall?
Thank you, Mayor. We just have one tonight from, uh, Chief Peterson, would like a minute, if you would, please.
Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, just a couple announcements. We have, uh, just an update on our new hire firefighters. Uh, currently, we have six members in a camp right now. They will graduate this Friday. They'll be ready to go out in the field starting next week, so we'll have the six of the nine. Uh, the other, uh, firefighters, they were, they started their camp Monday of this week. They're doing an eight-week camp. They'll graduate November 2nd, so they'll come out shortly after that. So, quite a process getting this all done so quickly. We appreciate your support, the, uh, citizens and, and the like, but I think we got a good group, so thank you for that. The second one is a little more touchy for me. Uh, as you're aware, Mayor, and the council and city manager, Bricky, I informed him and you all of my intention to retire before the end of the year. I'm here tonight to publicly announce my intention to retire, and that, that date will be November 9th. Uh, I just want to thank you all for your support, giving me the opportunity to serve this great city. It's a great city. We have a, a great bunch of people, a great staff. I have been supported by many of you so much. We, we have a great department, great fire department, and it's been a privilege to, to serve you. I've been doing this for over two-thirds of my life. I've been in the fire service, so this has been an experience for me, but it, it's time for me. So, thank you all so much.
You will definitely be missed, Chief, and so thank you for your service all these years. I think in West Jordan, it's been 18. Is that correct? So, and I know you're a little older than that, but... Um, well, now move to the council reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor, and Chief. I want to, uh, repeat what the mayor said. Um, your service is, is very much appreciated in this great city, and we have a great fire department, and I'm glad we were able to find ways to increase the staff in the fire department so that our, our service levels increase and our, our time to get to those who need our EMS group, uh, is, is shorter than it has been. So, I ju- I just appreciate your leadership and your ability to, to take that great task on. Um, that's really all I have. I've, I mean, I've, I've, I've been out working with code enforcement on some things, and, um, it's just been a busy week, so thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, ditto, Chief, what everybody said. Uh, no need to repeat. Um, the other thing I wanted to, to mention was, uh, this ranked choice voting thing that we just heard. Uh, I really want to get input on that from anybody who listened to that, um, presentation, either here tonight, in person, or online, or who looks it up. Anybody who's got an opinion on this, I want to hear from you, 'cause I, I'm intrigued by it, but I'm not sure where I stand on it. So, I want to hear from people. Um, email me, call me, however you choose to get ahold of me. Uh, this is something that, that really kind of has my, my antennas up, so I'd, I'd really want to hear from people. That's all I have tonight.
Councilmember Whitelock?
I just want to thank those that participated in our addiction awareness last Thursday. Um, while the numbers weren't huge, they were better than the county has seen so far. Um, and those that came, I think, left with some good information and feeling heard, so that was wonderful. The, tomorrow, actually, in this room at 6:30, we are going to have, by the Healthy West Jordan Committee again, holidays of good cheer, and that will be just helpful hints on how to get through the holidays in a healthy way. So, if any of you are interested, it's a free event here tomorrow at 6:30, and thank you, Chief.
Would you report on the opioid?
I did.
Come here. Sorry. Just looking for something else. Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor Riding. Um, I just wanted to take this opportunity to, um, talk about economic development in West Jordan. Um, I think when all of us up here on this dais ran, and those of us who ran in previous years, the first thing we talk about is economic development here in West Jordan. This has been a great year for economic development. Um, we've seen a new company called Lion Energy move into the Fairchild Building, which has sat empty for years. Uh, we have a new grocery store going in the old Albertsons. I've lived, lived in this area for 18 years now, and I've been waiting for that Albertsons to get filled with something. Great things are happening, um, and because of those things that are happening, I think we're going to see even more. Uh, Sears unfortunately is leaving, and that's not due to us, that's due to Sears, but we have, we have businesses moving into that building as well, so it won't sit empty. So, this has been great, and I want to take the opportunity, even though he's not here, for, for Ken Anderson, who is our economic director, and for his team, and for the hard work they're doing, and for the city as well. I really can't take personal responsibility for all that economic development, but as a city council, we do work together and work hard to work with the city and with, uh, those that are in, uh, economic development, to make sure that we're moving forward and that we're going to see great businesses coming to West Jordan, and I, and I hope to see even more in the years to come. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you, Chief, for your service to West Jordan, and for what you've done to make West Jordan a better place for all of us. Since our last city council meeting, I've held two town hall meetings. One was with residents who are concerned about people parking for West Jordan High School, the park on the street, south of West Jordan High School, so we had a good meeting this past week. And we also, I held a town hall meeting to meet with the people who are concerned about what's on the agenda today, about some, uh, possible changes that may happen on the west side of this city with 225-acre development. So, I'm looking forward to hearing from those people who came to town hall meeting and those that didn't. I'd like to hear your thoughts and your opinions about what you'd like to see in that location so that we can make sure we keep West Jordan a great place to live and work. And the third item I want to say is I am a member of the Association of Municipal Councils, which is an organization where the council member from each of the cities in Salt Lake County, we get together once a month and have a meeting, and they selected a new chairperson this month, and I'm happy to announce that I was selected by my peers to be the new chairperson of the AEMC, Association, Association of Municipal Councils. So, I will be serving that capacity for the next year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and we would also like to excuse, uh, Councilmember McConaughey tonight, he's, he's out of town. Uh, going to citizen comments, there will be opportunities for citizens to speak this evening. We have six public hearings. If you're here and would like to address any of the public hearings, you will have the opportunity to speak at a later point in the meeting. If you're here to discuss anything else, whether it is something that is on the consent calendar, a business item, or something that is not on the agenda, this will be your only opportunity in the meeting to discuss those things. You'll have a three-minute limit in which to, uh, talk and, uh, discuss your thoughts. Um, right? We have one person signed up that is, uh, not signed up to speak on another item, and this is Alice Sikorski. So, Alice, if you would come to the microphone, and, again, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Alice Sikorski, and I represent Rock, which is a rockhounders outreach for community knowledge. It is a nonprofit, educational, 501(c)(3) organization. Monthly meetings are the first Tuesday of the month at the Veridian Library and Event Center just west of here. Members do presentations at elementary school, Cub Scout groups, and senior centers. Community educations are taught monthly in the evenings at several locations. We can be found at the Gem Fair, the DNR Geo Week, school fairs, and the Utah Natural Museum of Natural History, Dino Days, et cetera. The Rock Annual Show is held each year in October, which is why I'm here. I'm asking for a variance on posting banners or signs on city property, specifically for four days, Thursday night, which, October 18th, through Sunday night, October 21st, on the three main access points to the Veridian Library, the intersections of 7800 South and 1985 West, Redwood Road and 8025 South, and 2200 West and West Veridian Road. These signs would be back behind the sidewalks and not interfere with any traffic. That is my request of variance.
And someone will staff from staff will get back with you on that.
Okay, and I've also left some of our show flyers with the city clerk. If any of you guys are rockers and women, come and join us. We have lots of rocks, and it's not this weekend, but next weekend. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Please come forward.
Hello, thank you for hearing me. I am Nikki George, and resident of West Jordan, and also a member of the Fox Hollow Elementary Community Council. Uh, I wanted to speak a little bit about some information that... Oh, good. I'm like, that was the fastest three minutes? Some information that we discussed at a recent community council meeting at our school regarding a police presence. Um, I understand that the west side of West Jordan is just exploding, and that it's difficult for our officers to be everywhere at once, and so look forward to increasing their presence. But, um, so far this school year, we've had two instances where the school has called and asked for an officer to come drive by, just be present, and, uh, neither of those times have they been able to actually have that request granted. Um, our principal is concerned about that, to the point that he asks that if officers are willing to increase their presence, especially around our elementary schools who don't have a police officer present, like our secondary schools, um, he would love to see just patrol cars near our elementary schools out that way. He's even willing, if they have paperwork or things that they need to do during the day, he would be happy to provide them with office space that they can just park their cars out and head in the school, and he'll give them a spot to work, and he'll even buy them a school lunch. So, I just wanted to make that, um, that issue, just bring it out a little bit, that we would love to see our officers a little more present near our elementary schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would have liked to address council at this time? Seeing none, then I will close citizen comments and move to the consent calendar. I've been asked to pull consent item 6B as in boy and 6D as in dog. So, Councilmember Anderson?
I'll move to approve the consent item 6A as in alpha, C as in Charlie, D as in echo, F as in foxtrot.
Councilmember Whitelock?
I'll second it.
So, we have a motion by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Whitelock. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Riding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
The vote passes six in favor.
Consent item 6B, I'm going to turn the minute over to our city attorney on that one.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Oliver would like to, will make a short presentation, and I would just, uh, caution the council, given the nature of, uh, this contract and providing network, uh, infrastructure in the city, if you have questions about the reason for the infrastructure and so forth, those are probably discussions that you should have in a closed meeting. Under the Open Meetings Act, there's a provision that allows councils to discuss reasons of city security and so forth in a closed meeting. Uh, if there are questions about the contract itself, of course, we can talk about those here now. So, Mr. Oliver, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, you're receiving the packet of the information I was just going to open up. If you had any discussion, the purpose of this, uh, is just an amendment to our central link contract that we have. Um, looking at adding some additional lines to harden our network from outages and to significantly, uh, increase our communication pass through some various different sites.
Councilmember Burton has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate what you're doing to make this happen, and I recognize, as I looked over that, we're providing some redundancy for our emergency personnel, which I think is a fantastic idea, and I'm totally in favor of that. There are, however, some locations that I don't think require the redundancy, and I'm looking at that, and as I look at that, is I understand, at each of those locations, we could, would save in the ballpark around $100 a month. So, if on three locations, that would make it $300, and if we multiply the 300 by 12, that comes out, you know, enough that I could buy myself a milkshakes. So, I'm thinking in those locations, since they're not strategic locations for our emergency personnel, and they, we already have communication in those locations, that I would like to pull those three off of the redundancy and just keep them on the system that they're on currently, to save us that type of money, but still provide the redundancy in the other locations in the event that we have a catastrophe, that we can provide services to our citizens.
Okay. Is that more of a statement, or do you have a question?
Who's that? Okay. So, do we have a motion then on consent item 6B? Councilmember Whitelock?
Well, I just have a question, so then is that something we need to discuss in closed session, those three areas that you want to pull? There was one that I questioned, so...
Who's?
What do we do, Rob?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I would defer to Mr., um, Oliver, sorry, Michael. My mind just went blank. Uh, if he thinks that's something that could relate to the security of the city system, we probably should go into closed session to discuss that.
Then, uh, well, Councilmember Whitelock, you're still up there, I guess.
So, well, 'cause I don't feel so...
I would advise a closed session.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
So, I thi- I think, do we need to, we don't need to take an action that would just repeat? I mean, we would just, or just move to table it for two weeks?
Either that, or you could go into a closed session for 10 minutes, which is not uncommon on these type of issues. It's up to you. I don't know what the, the timing on getting this contract in place.
Can it wait till the 24th, Michael?
It can wait. I got contractors waiting, we've been trying to put this in place for a bit, but I can't prevent one of the disasters, so it's a timeframe.
We, we could actually do it tonight. We have a closed meeting scheduled. It could be part of the agenda when you make your motion and to go, to go into closed meeting if you like. Uh, then we'd have to vote on it next, or two weeks from, two weeks from tonight.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to table this for further discussion and bring it back on October 24th. Is that suitable?
That's an appropriate motion, if that's what you'd like to do.
And then to discuss it in the closed session?
Tonight.
Tonight. Councilmember Burton? We have a, we have a motion on the table. And we have a second. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Burton?
So, if we discuss it tonight in the closed session, we could still vote on it tonight if we come back here after our closed session. So, I would rather we do that and have it happen tonight instead of waiting until the 24th.
I'll amend my motion.
Okay, let's...
That would be in order, Mayor.
Then we will, we will do that. Councilmember Anderson, you're still on?
Just, just for clarification, I'm amending the motion that we discuss it during closed session tonight and return back to the dais after the closed session and vote on this item.
Right, so we have a motion and a second, and that is to discuss this in closed session and come back in and vote in at the dais. Any discussion to that motion? Councilmember Whitelock?
You need a second, right?
It's already seconded.
Okay. Note a session.
Okay, then let's vote on that motion. I think you can do all in favor on this one.
You can do all five of your, if you choose. Or any of you guys, do you want a roll call?
Roll call.
Okay, good. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Riding?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Okay, item 6D? Okay, item six D was polled and so we'll turn that over to councilmember Burton.
Thank you, mayor. I have no oppositions with this one. However, I think it would be real good to have some discussion on what this is. I know what this is, but I don't think most people do. So I would like Brock to take a few minutes and explain to us what that is and what that's going to do for West Jordan and why we're excited to have this happen.
What this is, mayor and counsel, is it's a restoration project in conjunction with several other entities to create an urban fishery and recreation area up on the Jordan River at about eighty-six hundred south in the river. And this is one grant that the city has agreed to from Salt Lake County that will help create part of that. This is the first installment of a three-year grant for a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that we are getting from Salt Lake County to begin this construction that will begin starting, beginning in the spring, that'll start this project. It's about a ten-year project overall. I'm having Chuck Tarver actually do another updated presentation for you. I believe it's going to be scheduled for the twenty-fourth of this month.
Thank you. What south approximately is this located on the Jordan River?
It's going to be, well, the whole project will, in conjunction with other cities, will run from about seven thousand south all the way to Ninetieth. This portion of it will be at about eighty-six hundred south.
And if anyone hasn't seen the drawings on this, when you get a chance to do so, it's, it's very impressive and it's going to be a fantastic addition to our city. So thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
So on that, I move to approve six D as written.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Second.
So we have a motion by councilmember Burton and a second by councilmember Whitelock. A discussion of the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Mayor Riding.
Yes.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
The vote passes six in favor.
We'll now move to our public hearings. Tonight, the council will be conducting the public hearings in a different format. We will hear, hear public hearing tonight and then take the item under advisement until a later meeting in the council will make a decision. So with that, we begin with public hearing item eight A. Receive public comments only regarding a lease agreement between the city of West Jordan, South Valley Sanctuary nonprofit corporation, including a non-monetary five-thousand-one-hundred dollars. Rob Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was originally scheduled tonight for a public hearing. There are a couple of issues that we need to work out with the South Valley Sanctuary relative to how much space they are using and need. It's something that we would like to continue from the perspective of them being such an integral part of our judicial system, dealing with victims and so forth. And so I ask that we, we continue this for two weeks while we can meet with them and work out some of those details. Part of what we're trying to do is find them space for some of their counseling activities since when we changed the form of government, the current conference room that they've been using across the hall here is probably going to be used for the council and they're not going to be able to use that room on a regular basis, which, which they do now. If you'd like to, if there are residents here that came for the public hearing, you can open it for that and then continue it in two weeks or we can simply hold the public hearing in two weeks when we reschedule the item. So you may want to ask if there's anyone here that came to speak on this, hear what they have to say. And if, if not, just we'll do it next week or two weeks. If so, we can continue the public hearing to next week, or excuse me, next council meeting when we're ready, ready to consider the, the lease agreement, the contract.
I will take that as good advice and open the public hearing on this issue. If there's anyone that's here to speak on this tonight, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll take a motion to move this to October twenty-fourth. Councilmember Burton.
I would move that we that we reconvene our public hearing for the South Valley Sanctuary on the twenty-fourth and that we open that for a vote at that meeting as well, after the public hearing on that day. So we don't have to put them off for another two weeks again.
A motion, we have a second. Councilmember Lamb.
I'll second.
A motion by councilmember Burton, a second by councilmember Lamb. Discussion to that motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Mayor Riding.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
The vote passes six in favor.
Public hearing item eight B, receive public comments only regarding an increase to the water impact fee as contained in the Tishler Bice Water Impact Fee Study and Facilities Plan Report of Gen. 29, 2018. Dave Murphy.
Thank you, mayor and counsel, for the opportunity to speak to this item tonight. This is an item that has roots going back into last year and reports that were amended and changed and updated for this council meeting. I have with me Ben Griffin from Tishler Bice. He's been with them for approximately five years. He will be going through the presentation with you shortly here. He's been involved in studies, fifty-five studies nationwide. And he comes from to us with a bachelor's in finance from the University of Mississippi and also a master's degree in urban planning from the University of New Orleans. For this item, for both the public and the council, the next meeting would be the action meeting. If there are questions, we'd ask that those be received from the council for, via email because of issues with Tishler Bice being able to be here in the next meeting because of previously, previously scheduled meetings for them. So if we could get those comments over the next two weeks, we will answer them as, as we can, plus whatever public comments we have tonight. At this point then, I'll turn some time over to Ben to go through the presentation.
Mayor, counsel, good evening. It's great to be back, especially since it was in Phoenix this morning. It was eighty degrees, so this is a very welcome change. It actually feels like fall finally, so thanks for having me. All right, so quick overview, this is how we're going to lay it out. We're going to talk about the development projections, the methodology we're using this time around, water demand and projections, the fee components, your IFFP and then the proposed fees. So these development projections should look very familiar. We showed them to you last year. They're also the, the same adopted development projections we used in the non-utility fees that you adopted, I think, two years ago or the beginning of last year. So these should look very, very familiar to you. So methodology, we're really looking at two components with the water fees. So we're looking at a wells and pump station component. So that's plan-based, we've identified a well. And then the reservoirs and transmission component. We're looking at peak gallons as, as required by the state of Utah. And so again, at the bottom, you can just see, you know, we're just talking about the water fees. We're just doing a plan-based methodology where we identify projects that you would like to build and we're allocating all the cost to the peak day water demand. All right, so at the top, you can see the, the average day and peak day demand by development type. So we, you know, in, in the last meeting, we had just essentially a residential and a non-residential demand. We broke this out, identified the multifamily demand. That way we can get a better indicator on single-family demand and we'll use that demand as our base meter size. And so we're looking, based on 2016 demand, you know, the average single-family dwelling uses about three-hundred-and-sixty-one gallons per day. That's peak gallons and so we want to use that when we're, when we're basing our fees. And then, you know, through the last year of discussion, you know, we didn't want to charge too high of a fee on the well because you do have, you know, blended sources. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, any fees really took into account that, you know, wells, you know, those account for about thirteen percent of your water sources. And then, you know, the water you receive from Jordan Valley is the, the remaining eighty-seven percent. So you'll see that on the, the last page where we look at the fees. But essentially, we're making sure that we take in that blended, that, those blended sources when we look at what fee we should charge for a well component. All right, so up next, we have projected water demand. So, you know, we're showing a ten-year increase in your peak water demand of just under ten million gallons. That number becomes important for one of the components. The other number that's important is the thirteen percent of that. So we're saying that, you know, the peak demand from wells would increase by about one-point-two-million gallons per day over the next ten years. So essentially, those, those two areas in red, those are the important numbers to look at in this slide. So now you see the wells and pump stations component. We have, we've identified one well, additional capacity of about two-point-two MGD. And so we're looking at a growth share or future development share of that being eighty-five percent. And so we're saying, you know, all future development, they will be able to use, you know, this one-point-eight MGD of capacity and that has a cost of about one-point-four million. And really with the water fees, what we're doing is saying, all right, whatever, you know, this is the cost. This is how many gallons you add in capacity. We really just want to know the cost per gallon and capacity for the fee. So that ends up being seventy-seven cents on the well components. And so, you know, we're, we're trying to keep this in line with your other fees where you update every six years. So that's why we're showing just a four-year increase because that would be the same timeframe as your next update. But, you know, if, if development falls as a projection shown earlier, you know, you would generate, sorry, peak water demand would increase by about four-hundred-eighty-thousand gallons over the next four years. And so you would generate about three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars in impact fees for this. You also see in the, the gray shaded area, basically you would pay for the growth share of this in year fourteen if you follow the development projections. Up next, you have the reservoirs and transmission lines. So this, this lists all of the reservoir and transmission line projects. And so we're saying that you're adding about ten-point-five MGD of growth-related capacity and the cost of that is just under twenty-million dollars. So we're looking at a cost per gallon of capacity of a dollar and ninety-one cents. Again, we have a four-year peak day increase of all water sources of about three-point-six MGD. So over the next four years, you would generate just under seven-million dollars in impact fees towards the growth, the growth share of about twenty-million dollars. And you would pay that off approximately in year eleven. All right, so this, this is just something unique to Utah where we are required to show just a list of all the projects. So it's basically the two previous slides together and it shows the fiscal year where these projects were identified. So if you look at total project, not just the, not just the growth share, you've identified about twenty-eight-point-two-million dollars worth of water improvements. And, you know, we said that, you know, about twenty of the reservoir and transmission lines and about one-point-four of the well and pump stations are identified as growth-related. So this, these would be the proposed fees. So if you look at the top line, you know, you have the wells and pump station component. What we're doing there is saying that we're using a lower number. So instead of saying, you know, every single family is going to use three-hundred-and-sixty-one gallons, we're saying that for wells and pumps, we want to make sure that we're only using thirteen percent of that to make sure that the fee reflects future development's actual share and their actual cost. And so we're saying for wells and pumps, the average single family would use forty-eight gallons per day at a cost of seventy-seven cents per gallon. That component of the fee would be thirty-six dollars and ninety-six cents for reservoir and transmission projects. We're using the full amount, so three-sixty-one gallons per day, a dollar ninety-one per gallon. So that component is, you know, about six-hundred-and-ninety dollars. And then, you know, it's just, it's math going on from this. We're just saying, oh, you know, if the average user is seven-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and forty-seven cents per gallon and you have three-point-four-six persons per single-family unit, then the single-family fee would be two-thousand-five-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, which is an increase of about two-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars compared to your current fee. All other fees, including the fee for a multifamily unit, is just assessed by the size of the meter. And so your base meter, that's the three-quarter inch, that's the equivalent to a single-family. That's two-thousand-five-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. And every meter size larger, you just apply a capacity ratio. So a one-inch meter, you multiply by one-point-seven. That gives you your, your fee of four-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. So again, it's just taking everything at the top, which is designed for single-family units, getting that single-family fee and then just applying a factor on top of that for the larger, for the larger meters. Thank you.
That concludes the presentation and now if there's any questions, or actually just go straight to the public comments.
We do have some questions, so let's start with councilmember Burton.
Sure, go ahead.
So if we can bring slide seven back up, please. Okay, so I hear on slide seven, it says cost per gallon capacity is seventy-seven cents and that is just for wells and the electricity to pump the water? Is that correct?
That is only for the construction cost of the well. That is not operations and maintenance, which you cannot charge to an impact fee.
Okay, so, and then we go to the next slide. It says it's a dollar ninety-one. So that is for reservoirs and transmissions regardless of whether the water comes from a well. So this, that price is in addition to this one. So we could actually add those together, is that correct?
That's correct in the fee, yes.
Okay, and that comes out, as I did my math, two-sixty-eight.
Yeah, I'd be correct.
Good, I did that right. Okay, the next question I have is, last year when this came up, we had some questions on the numbers. Do we have a copy of what the last year numbers were? Not what our current rate is, but what the projected was.
I don't have those with me tonight, but we can get them to you if you want to look, look through them and review them.
Because I don't remember them either. These, however, appear to be lower than what we had last time.
It is lower.
Do you know what percentage approximately?
I do not at this point, but I know that we removed one well project from the list, which basically cut the well component down by that same amount roughly.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, mayor. Let's go to the next slide. I believe it's on the next slide. Yeah, twenty-eight-million-one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand in water system improvements. Is that in today's dollars?
Correct.
Okay. Just because we know that by the time these are built, it, it won't be today's dollars.
And in fact, some of these numbers do come from the 2015 reports from the master plan, so.
So these aren't even today's dollars?
These dollars are still going to be adjusted.
Some of these are about forty-year-old dollars.
Three, at this point.
Well, twenty-eighteen's almost over.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, thanks.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, mayor. If you can go to the next slide, slide ten. And I just want a little bit of clarification. We talked about, and maybe I'm just not understanding it correctly, the wells and pump stations, the seventy-seven cents. If I understood the comments, it was thirteen percent based on what we, from, from the wells that we have. Eighty-seven percent comes from Jordan Valley. And the reservoirs and transmission at, at three-hundred-and-sixty-one residential peak gallons per day, that represents a hundred percent. So we're including the wells plus the, the Jordan Valley in, in that calculation. So I guess my, my question is, are we counting the, the thirteen percent twice? Because we have it under wells and then also reservoirs and transmissions? Or help me, help me get a little clarity on that.
So any of you who were here for the last presentation, we were using the same number for the wells and pump stations as a component because we need to say, all right, this is, you know, what each person uses and then multiply by the cost per gallon. And it was just too high because of the blending. And so what we're actually doing is saying, all right, well, we're only taking, you know, thirteen percent of what the, the average user thirteen percent of what the, uh, the average user is actually using, um, for the wells and pump stations component, and we're taking all of what they use for the reservoir and transmission components.
I'll explain that.
Yeah.
So what that means is, you have to have the reservoirs and the transmission components there to convey the water. We're filling those reservoirs and transmission lines with eighty-seven percent of Jordan Valley water and thirteen percent of our water, so it all has to be there. That's what that means.
Okay, and then maybe just for the benefit of the residents that are here, um, maybe just talk about what these impact fees are, are used for. So the, the state allows us to, allows the city to charge impact fees for certain items.
Okay. The impact fees are used directly to construct these new projects on this list, as indicated, and cannot be used for any other type of use. They cannot be used for operations and maintenance of the system, only for new construction. So that is, that is what they are used, collected for and used for. They're held separately in separate accounts that are restricted accounts, so that they, again, cannot be used for operations and maintenance.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Dave. Um, seeing no more questions, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone interested, present, who would like to address this situation? On the, please come forward, and just as a reminder, you have three minutes. You'll give us your contact information, please.
Uh, Dave Newton, twenty-five fifty-five Carson Lane, West Jordan. Uh, a year ago, you know, I was very critical of where we were at with these impact fees. Uh, I haven't been through the numbers yet, but I will. Uh, but it looks much, much better than it was a year ago. So, thanks to Tisha Bice and Ben and, and Dave, and, and what they've done there. And, uh, I'll, I'll take a quick look, uh, in the next week or so and, uh, and let you know. But, uh, but it looks, it looks much more credible than it was a year ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on this issue and move to the next one. Public hearing item eight C, "Receive public comments only regarding amending the business license and renewal dwelling units fees to comply with state law." Rock.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Soon as we get it on, Mayor. Good. Okay, back in, uh, May of this year, uh, we received and accepted by resolution a fee study that was completed for business license and rental dwelling. It was completed by Zion's Public Finance. That, uh, fee study was commissioned in two thousand and seventeen by state law. We had to come in compliance with business licenses being done by classification instead of by employee numbers. That legislation was enacted in May of twenty eighteen. This was then given to me to take a look at and come up with our own type of fee study. So what I have here is what we have put together for you. We took the fee study completed by Zion's Public Finance. We utilized comparable cities to West Jordan, as well as input from the police and fire departments. And these are the cities we also use, South Jordan, Provo, West Valley, Salt Lake, as you can see. Now, the current way we do our business license fees is we use a flat rate between the f- cost of seventy-five and three hundred dollars, in addition to a three dollars for a full-time employee, as well as a dollar fifty per part-time employee. And that is what we assess to the businesses for their business license fees. Now, the study was, the last study completed for the city was commissioned in two thousand and fourteen and assessed in, or excuse me, two thousand and four, and assessed in two thousand and five. These fees are based by the information gathered by the employer or the business on the number of employees we have, or that he has. With the businesses expanding or reducing in size throughout the year, we don't have the slightest idea of how many employees he has from one year to the next. We take the word of the employer when he comes in to renew his license on how many employees they actually have. That is what their license is based on. Now, state statute was changed this year, as it states now, "All license fees and taxes shall be uniform in respect to the class upon which they are imposed." Those classes were broken down in the Zion study and placed into different classifications. Now, the Zion study took the, they utilized the hourly pay rates of everybody involved with management or oversight of businesses and business licensing, whether it be directly or indirectly in managing the businesses and the licensing. They broke this down as to a per-minute rate per employee, and then how many minutes they actually utilized towards the business license or management of the business licensing. Now, they, they came up with a base level of service. What they utilized for the base level of service was the average, single-family occupied-by-owner residence. Call for service in the city of West Jordan was point five, calls per service a year of EMS, police and fire, and/or fire, excuse me. And they figured that was the base level. So even the businesses were considered at that point five. Anything over and above that point five was considered a disproportionate number of calls. So what they did is they utilized that direct or that broke-down per-minute fee to actually determine what the disproportionate fee was for a business. They took the actual cost for a police response or a fire response, multiplied it or divided it by that call over and above the point five. They did this by using business types and class, and came up with a fee by type of business, whether it be a professional office building, a medical facility, an entertainment facility, and that's how they determined disproportionate fees. Now, excuse me, it's difficult comparing the businesses with other cities, because the majority of the other cities surrounding West Jordan are still utilizing the per-employee charge. They have also not switched over to the current state statute recommendation on by class. Um, so what we are proposing here tonight is the general base fee for the business licenses be a flat fee across the board. In prior years, our flat, or our general fee has changed depending on the business. But in speaking to staff in the business license department, the applications are pretty much the same. One may take an extra five minutes as opposed to another. So what we're proposing is that a flat fee of one hundred dollars that will reflect the regulatory, regulatory costs per license. And that this will be in addition to the disproportionate fees per class, depending on the classification. The disproportionate fees being proposed are to recover the cost of calls for service from police and fire that exceed the basic level of service that the single-family homeowner occupied receives. The disproportionate fees being recommended are twenty-five percent of what the Zion's finance fee study indicated could be charged by state law. This is being done as to not place the, the burden that the vi- that the study actually indicates is the disproportionate cost the city is having to, to accrue for the calls per service. Now, the Zion's fee study indicated that business licensing is being subsidized through other, other sources of revenue from the city to the tune of a total of about one point eight hundred and sixty-five million dollars a year, one point eight million a year. And that was based on two thousand and seventeen business license numbers. Now, the significant difference in cost and revenues are largely, largely due to the disproportionate calls for service from police and fire and EMS to these businesses that are over and above the base calls for service. Now, the twenty-five percent disproportionate fee would recoup and assist in reducing the city's subsidy by nine hundred and eight thousand dollars. That is about a forty-eight pers- just over forty-eight percent reduction in recouping those subsidies that other sources of revenue are having to currently cover for those EMS responses. Now, what I've also included in your packet are three other options. A ten percent disproportionate fee, a fifteen percent, and a twenty percent also for you to consider. Those are included in your packet. Highlighted in there, you'll notice there are gyms, which we have currently reached out and contacted Zion's Financial to break down gyms and medical into subcategories. Because currently, they are not broken down into subcategories, we are working on obtaining that information as well, due to the, the difference between a hospital and a single chiropractic business, because there is a wide difference. That information is being gathered at the moment. So what we have here is, say, the movie theater that Zion's study says we could collect by law twenty-two thousand dollars for a business license. By taking that ten percent in disproportionate cost, w- we're looking at twenty-four hundred dollars on a fee. Okay? So in there is also a fifteen percent, a twenty percent, as well as the twenty-five What that does to the business license revenues with disproportionate fees is it takes the two thousand and seventeen and eight projected revenues that we currently have under our current system at three hundred and eighty-six thousand, with the ten percent disproportionate increase puts it to eight hundred and ninety-six, and so on down to the twenty-five percent at one point two nine four. The Zion study would put it at just under four million dollars in business license fees if we went with what state law would allow us to do. Now, all calculations were made with the current numbers of businesses we have licensed in the city at this, at this time. And that's taking it at a per-class basis, not an employee basis, which we're currently operating under. And that is what I have for you currently.
We have some questions, and I guess my first question for you would be, um, if the city is currently subsidizing, um, this, where is that money coming from? What accounts are, is that subsidy coming from? Do you know?
My understanding is it would be coming out of general revenues.
Just, just out of the general fund?
Correct.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Burton, if you got a question?
I do, thank you, Mayor. So as I was looking over your list, you, I noticed you had lodging, and the category had a per-bed charge instead of the per-employee charge.
Correct.
So my question from that, if we use that as an example, could we use something, let's say, for the theaters and go a square footage charge instead of going to a, a per-employee charge and make the classification fit under square footage? So if it's a small theater that has two theaters compared to a large theater that's got twenty theaters, they don't pay the same rates, it would be different. Could we do something like that?
Yeah, we can look into that, absolutely.
Okay. Because I think that would help on the smaller businesses, so they don't have to pay the large fee that some of the larger businesses would have to pay. The other question I have, and I know you, you didn't mention this, but one of the things the state says is we can't charge for home-based businesses, they don't have any, I can't remember if they're quite written on there, but any impact in the neighborhood.
Correct.
So even though we're not charging a license fee, could we still require them to have a license, so that we can be aware that the business is there and have a contract between us and then that business, so they know what's expected from the city and the, and the city knows, understands that they know what's expected of them when they're in a residence?
I believe that we can require them to, to have the license, as long as we are not charging them for the license, yes.
Okay. So the next question on that, could we, because right now, I have two home-based businesses, and I pay, I've been, been paying forty dollars a year for that, so I pay eighty dollars. And when the state came with this, the state, he told me I didn't need to renew that license, but I do, because the type of business I have, I'm required by my insurance and others to have a business license. So that's offered to us. If, so I, I've paid the forty dollars. So if another home-based business comes and they're required to have a business license, can we charge whatever our cost is to issue that license to them if we're not requiring it, but they would request it?
Yes. Well, if they are requesting the license at their request, we can charge them our costs to, to issue that license, to recover our costs, yes.
And your estimation on that would be one hundred dollars, because that's what you said that flat fee would be?
For processing and regulation of that license, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
I'm actually looking up something, because I, I don't think the home base is right. So if I can come back after Councilmember Jacob.
Sure. Councilmember Jacob. Thank you. Um, what you're looking up is one, is not what I wanted to initially talk about, but you're right, um, in that that was wrong. If you have a home-based business with no impact, you cannot be charged a fee, whether you, whether the city wants you to have a license or not, you can't be charged a fee. We had this discussion like, now, six or eight months ago. Um, that's not what I wanted to ask you about. What I wanted to ask you about was, if we go, well, I want to keep this three-point-seven million dollar number in mind for a second, but let's go back a couple of slides. I tried to keep count, but I lost count. Uh, let's just go to the fifteen percent, that, that works. So right now, a gym, let's just assume that they're paying the full three hundred dollar base under the current, because it's seventy-five to three hundred dollars, right? Was the range?
Correct.
Let's just assume they're paying the three hundred dollars plus a, a per-employee fee. Um, and how much do we charge per employee again?
Three dollars for full-time, a dollar fifty part-time.
Three dollars per full-time. Let's say they have a hundred full-time employees. Now, at a gym, it's gonna be a freaking large gym, but, but just for sake of argument, that's three hundred dollars more, so that's a six hundred and thirty-five dollar business license, or six hundred dollar business license, that we're going to now increase to two thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars? At fifteen percent, we could charge as much as eighteen thousand dollars for a business license for a guy who's currently paying six hundred dollars. Um, percentage-wise, I don't even want to calculate what that percent increase is, but it's a lot.
Yes, it is.
It's, it's, it sounds, when we put the fifteen percent thing on there, it sounds like, oh, we're just raising your fee fifteen percent. Uh-uh. Um, twenty-seven hundred dollars from six hundred dollars is, uh, four hundred percent. So just something to keep in mind, um, as we're looking at this. I know we're not going to necessarily make a decision on this tonight, but imagine yourself, uh, as a business owner or runner in this city, as some of us are, and what your, uh, what your change in impact is going to be under what's being proposed here. Not saying that something shouldn't happen, because there is a subsidy there that maybe shouldn't be there as much. Uh, however, those businesses are also paying, you know, property taxes, they're paying sales taxes to the city. There are other ways that we're collecting revenue from these businesses for those services. So keep that in mind a- as well as we look at this.
Business license fees haven't been raised in almost fifteen years as well.
Right, and I'm not saying they shouldn't be raised something. I'm just saying that what's proposed is allowable.
Right.
Seems a little extreme. Uh, by the way, if we were collecting that, uh, maximum three-point-seven million, that's a three-point-four million more than we're currently collecting, which is about twice our, uh, property tax increase this year. Um, this is one reason why, there were a few things I wanted to wait on before we pass that and look into and dig into before we went to property taxes, because there are revenue sources out there. Anyway, uh, neither here nor there, I just wanted to throw that out there. That number really stuck out to me because of that last discussion. So, thank you. Those are my, my comments for right now. Um, recognizing that we're not going to vote tonight, and thanks for answering my questions.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you for allowing me, uh, to look this up. So just looking at Senate Bill one fifty-eight that passed this last legislative session, it just says, "The municipality may not require a license or permit for a business..." "The municipality may not require a license or permit for a business that is operated only occasionally and by an individual who is under eighteen years of age," so that solves the lemonade stands, "or charge any fee for a resident of the municipality to operate a home-based business unless the combined off-site impact of the home-based business and the primary residential use materially exceeds the off-site impact." And then it says, notwithstanding, and I'm not an attorney, so there's attorneys over there that can interpret what I'm saying. "Notwithstanding that section, a municipality may charge an administrative fee for a license to a home-based business owner who is otherwise exempt, but who requests a license from the city." So, an administrative fee to me is not a, a... Or i- is not... What am I trying to say? A administrative fee is just the fee to issue a license, like for Councilmember Burton, who has to have a license for insurance and Dole, right? So, he has to come to the city, we wouldn't charge a hundred dollars for that, we would charge an administrative fee, right?
That hundred dollars is the regulatory fee for the processing, the administration of the license, and that has got nothing to do with disproportionate fees for EMS, police, fire, or anything else. That is the processing and the, basically, the, the administering the license.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with that. The other, the, yeah, I, I'm, my comments kind of echo the same thing, as I'm looking at the proposed list. Uh, we have subgroups for, I guess, retail business, less than twelve thousand square feet, twelve thousand to a hundred square feet, and greater than a hundred thousand square feet. So, they have different, um, they have different fees based on the, on the size, so a subclass. Um, it's not on this page, um, I'll, this, this will work for now. And then games vending, uh, so if they have one to ten machines, they're, they're broken into subclasses. But then when we look at, uh, even residential care, assisted living in group homes, they're in, um, a s- different subclass. And like you had mentioned with movie theaters and gyms, um, and medical, I mean, I, the, the medical, we would charge the hospital the same as Jordan Valley Family Medicine, uh, just a clinic or an office, but, you know, an office space with a couple docks. So, I, I think there might need to be some subclasses there. I agree with movie theaters, I don't know if that should be on, on square footage or number of screens, uh, but I think that would probably be eligible for some subclasses. And I think there's others, and then would, am I correct to assume that a vendor license, uh, would also include a food truck? Where would a food truck fall in?
Uh, I believe we have a food truck category separately. We do, we have a separate food truck category.
Okay, thank you.
This is just a snippet of the total licenses. I didn't want to throw them all on there, this just gave an example of what the fifteen percent, ten percent would look like.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate you, uh, we talked on the phone, I think it was yesterday, about, about some of these subclasses, and I mentioned I was gonna bring it up. Uh, so I, I think there's some tweaking that we can do with that.
Absolutely.
Um, I, I do kind of like, uh, you know, I don't know what, whether it's ten percent, fifteen, twenty-five, what, what the right number is, but I am grateful that we are looking at kind of revamping this to go along with what Councilman Jacobs said with, um... We haven't raised it for a long time, and it's nice to kind of reassess, relook at it, come into compliance with state law, and cover the cost so that we're not subsidizing our business license operations as much as we are.
And in order to break this down into those further categories, there will need to be more study and data provided in order to break that down farther for us. The Zion's has some of that information, we did speak to them, they just didn't provide it in the study. Uh, the party we talked to couldn't understand why it wasn't provided, but the gentleman that put this together is no longer employed by Zion's, so we are looking into that, and hopefully, we'll be able to get some answers here within the next few days.
Okay, I'd, I'd appreciate to, to hear back on, on what their numbers are for gyms, medical, movie theaters, just some of these other, others that I think need to be subclassed. Thank you, that's all I have, Mayor.
Further questions? Rob, did you have a comment on that?
Yeah, Mayor, just one other point of clarification, since there are so many residents here. Let me just add that the other exceptions to where a license is required is if there is an in-home adult or childcare business or a preschool. And the other category is if the business, irrespective of what it is, has customers or clients that come to the home. Those are also categories that are required, the city can still require a business license and collect a fee.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Brock. At this time, I will open the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address counsel on this issue, please come forward.
Seems to be my turn tonight. David Newton and Melanie knows how to get ahold of me. Um, I'm trying to wrap my head around this because I, I hadn't, uh, uh, I hadn't really thought about the business license situation. To, to look at this, um, a- uh, from the point of view of, of providing services, meaning calls for police and fire, ambulance services, seems to me a little bit, uh, inappropriate. For, and, and let me see if I can make this clear. When, when we have a call for police services to a resident, we're not subsidizing that call. When we have firemen come to a residence, we're not subsidizing that call. That comes out of the general fund, which we all pay into with our property taxes. Businesses do the same thing, and in many respects, it's like insurance. We, we pay into it, everybody pays into it, but we don't all use it, but it's there when we need it. That same thing happens with businesses. So, why, uh, we're, to say that, that, that this is a subsidy, I think is, is, uh, looking at it totally wrong. I'm not sure what the answers are for businesses, but if we provide a service for them above and beyond these services that we're paying for with, with property taxes, then maybe that, that should be charged for. For example, we have the fire department come, um, and, and inspect businesses, okay? There should probably be a charge for that, because that's above and beyond the normal routine. I think when we look at, you know, thousands of dollars, like Councilmember Jacob indicated, something's, something's not right. So, I would urge you to be very careful in considering what we're doing, how to pay for it, and where we're going with this. That'll do, that'll do, thank you.
Anyone else that would like to address this issue? Seeing none, I will, uh, close the public hearing on this issue. I move to public hearing item eight D. Receive public comments only to consider assessing a new fee associated with publicly available electric vehicle charging stations. Ryan Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. We've just completed the installation of, at the new Public Works complex for the, uh, with the electric vehicle charging stations. Um, there's a need now to establish a fee for, uh, the public available, uh, I want to call them pumps, I gotta... So, the charging stations are, um, to cover the costs associated with the operation and maintenance of those, uh, charging stations. Justin Stoker's done a great deal of research and, uh, was, uh, involved heavily with the installation. He's here tonight, um, and is slated to do the presentation on this, so I'll turn the time over to him, Justin Stoker.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. As Brian's mentioned, as many of you are aware, we received a grant of seventy thousand dollars to be able to install electric vehicle charging stations at the new Public Works building. As we were, uh, installing these, we surveyed, uh, different charging stations around the valley to kind of get an idea of what people charged for them. We realized that there's about a dozen of the DC Fast Chargers that are located in Salt Lake Valley, and all but one, the DC Fast Charger that's located at the Rocky Mountain Power headquarters, uh, charged some sort of a fee for their use to cover the energy costs, to cover costs for maintenance and servicing, and, uh, just service agreements. And so, what we bring to you, uh, is a proposal to charge, uh, a basic fee that I believe is in line with what the other, owners of DC Fast Chargers are charging to help cover the costs of those chargers. This is a fee that only people that are using the, the Fast Charger would use. So, it doesn't impact anybody, uh, any resident, it's only for somebody that's using a DC Fast Charger as if they were using a gas pump. And so, um, we present this fee to you, there's, there's three different aspects to electric vehicle charging stations. Uh, those, um, asp- three different aspects are in your council packet. But first, it, it charges a fee based upon the energy used in kilowatt-hours. A second one is based upon just a connection charge. And then a third one is a station fee. Uh, most people use the station fee to prevent people from camping out, uh, in the, in the spots and preventing other people from coming in and using it. So, that station fee is usually charged after a grace period, usually about one or two hours. And so, in your council packet, we propose, um, an energy fee and a minimal connection fee. Uh, we suggest twenty cents per kilowatt-hour and a dollar fifty, uh, connection fee, and then a five-dollar per hour charge to, after two hours of using the DC Fast Chargers. Um, we believe that this will help cover our costs for energy and for the service agreements that we have, uh, long-term for these chargers. And I'm willing to answer any questions you may have.
Explain, as you did to me, how the, uh, consumer pays for this.
Okay, so, DC Fast Chargers don't have any sort of credit card readers or cash receptacles, there's no teller or anything like that. So, um, and, interesting enough, ju- there's, there's two main networks for electric vehicle charging in, in the country. Uh, there's ChargePoint and there's EV Go. Uh, ChargePoint is on the state co- cooperative contract, the state of Utah has gone through and vetted them, and made them part of the state cooperative contract. And, uh, between those two networks, a person would basically register an account on their phone, or you can get a little key tag that has an RFID chip in it. And so, when you go up to one of these charging stations, uh, you can either use the phone app that says, you know, I'm located at this point, I'm using this, and it basically, it's all commen- connected through the cellular network. And so, after you've hit go, you can take the little plug off, plug it in your car, and it keeps track of it on your phone, much the way, same way that Uber and Lyft work. And so, um, there's no transactions that happen anywhere at the device itself. ChargePoint itself would, uh, collect all of the fees associated with, uh, that user and their electricity usage. And then at the end of the month, they keep ten percent to cover their administrative costs, and then they send a check to the city for the remaining, remaining ninety percent.
Thank you, Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's suppose an employee pulls in there and decides to charge his car, and instead of moving it after two hours, he leaves it there 'cause he's working. So, will he have a charge that will continue for each hour after the two hours?
Yeah, the, the charging station doesn't distinguish between resident, non-resident, employee, or alien from a different planet. Uh, once you've, once you've used the app or you've swiped your RFID tag, um, it starts to keep, it, uh, immediately assesses the connection charge, and then it keeps track of how much energy you use. Once the car says, "I'm full," it stops giving you energy, and then after two hours, if you're still plugged in, then it would can, it would charge you five dollars an hour, basically as a penalty for camping in the spot.
Okay, let's suppose we did the reverse of that. He pulls in in the morning, or she, and parks her vehicle there, and comes out two hours before it's time to go home and plugs their car in, then they wouldn't have to pay the extra fee, they would just pay for the energy.
Correct.
They would pay the late fee, even though they were parked there the whole time.
So, in addition to the DC Fast Chargers, we have Level Two Chargers, uh, which are substantially cheaper to maintain. Uh, we have two charging ports for those, and, um, when we surveyed the, the community on the Level Two Chargers, nobody charges for the Level Two Chargers. Um, there's very minimal cost to them, it's really just a, a minimal energy-only type of thing. So, we're only proposing the fee on the DC Fast Chargers, which is kind of a premium service. Um, the Level Two Chargers, if you had, um, a resident or, uh, an employee or somebody, or somebody that came to the soccer complex, um, on the weekend and plugged in for eight hours, they can charge, basically, it's a trickle charger. Um, they can continue to, they could charge that way. The DC Fast Charger is meant to charge a car in an hour. And if you're camping there for eight hours, you're blocking other people from using it.
Right, but what I'm saying is if they don't, if they park first and charge at the end, then we don't pu- charge them that extra fee. They could park there for twenty-five hours, and then you just charge the last hour before they leave, and save their spot there. And there would be no charge, 'cause it doesn't record them pulling into the spot until they start, begin their charge, is that correct?
I, I guess I don't understand your question.
So, in the morning, let's say it's an employee, pulls in there, po- parks in the morning, but doesn't hook the charger up, goes in to work, comes out at lunch, hooks the charger in then, and then when he finishes charging, he drives off.
I, I see what you mean, yes, there's nothing that could potentially pers- keep somebody from just parking in the parking spot and blocking the charger.
It doesn't record that being there, it only records while it's attached. So, if they were to come out after an hour and detached it and not move their vehicle, they still wouldn't get that additional charge after the two hours, is that correct?
Correct, it's, it's only keeping track of the time in which you're plugged in.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lam?
Thank you, Mayor. A quick question on, uh, the use of these currently now, are they currently being used?
That's a great question, and so...
That wasn't a pun, by the way, but...
So, there was a, a period of about four days where we were, um, setting them up and authenticating them. We had to locate them, um, and activate them on the ChargePoint network. That process began on a Thursday, and it, and on Monday or Tuesday, we had finished getting it all worked out. And in those, I guess it was two, uh, Thursday evening, a Friday, a Monday, and then a Saturday and a Sunday, there was about four or five days where the DC Fast Charger was on, but we weren't charging fees, we weren't charging fees. So, um, but in that time period, we had about a dozen users that came in and used it. And what we found is that there are several automotive makers, uh, BMW is, is one, that actually gives their, uh, owners, uh, unlimited charges on ChargePoint for two years. Now, BMW is paying that fee, not the, the driver, so in those four days, we had it on, we had about a dozen users. Uh, we found out that we had people from Spanish Fork, uh, we had one from Harriman, we had a couple of, well, we had one person from Saro So- Saratoga Springs that used it several times, and a couple from Salt Lake City. And so, um, it was, it was being used several times a day, and, um, none of them were West Jordan residents, so...
And that was my question, 'cause it's, you know, if I think about the Public Works building, it's not a building that's, you know, easy to get to, you have to bake your way to it, unless you live next to it.
Well, eh, I actually had the opportunity to talk to one of the, the, these drivers, and he said, I talked to the gentleman that drives the BMW from Saratoga Springs, and he says it's convenient for him 'cause it's right off Bangater Highway, 'cause he works up by the airport, and so, he stops right in there, charges it for about ten, fifteen minutes, and then he's good, because he doesn't have a, he doesn't have a high-voltage charger at his home.
So, is there an app or a website that tells where these are at?
Yeah, so there's two different apps that are available, you can go to ChargePoint.com, and that'll show you where all of the ChargePoint stations are. And tho- our station got uploaded to that once we activated the charger. Um, it's currently disabled, it's not active right now. Um, not, another one that's actually more widely known is called PlugShare.com, and that's kind of more of a, a wiki where it's more crowdfunded or crowdsourced. Um, the, that Thursday that we activated it, there was a user that went in and located our charger on PlugShare, took pictures of it, identified all of our different plug types, and put that up on PlugShare before we were even ready to publicly acknowledge it. And so, um, that is one of the, the greatest, I mean, uh, what, we found that many of the electric vehicle drivers go to PlugShare to find out where all the charging stations are. go to PlugShare to find out where all the charging stations are. And somebody put our stuff up on, on PlugShare before we even ready to have it up there. But they did a good job.
Yeah. Well, my, my first thought was this would be a great service for West Jordan residents, but it sounds like the majority are not West Jordan residents. So.
Well, eh, eh, it's a great opportunity for those. And when we, uh, had talked to, um, Rocky Mountain Power who gave us the, the grant, um, one thing that they were excited about was the, not only the, the, the soccer complex and people that would be using it over the weekends for the soccer complex, but our proximity also to Jordan Landing. Um, we're maybe a hundred yards away from the beginning points of Jordan Landing. And so anybody that would come into this area could, could stop, plug in their car. Um, it could be West Jordan residents. It could be anybody that really is in the area. So.
Thank you, Justin.
Councilmember, uh, Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I don't know a lot about electric cars. My, my best friend drives a Leaf and I know that Teslas are cool. Um, I went for a ride in one once.
That's where most of us are.
Yeah, right? But now I guess you can buy them in Utah. So, um, awesome. I can't buy one in Utah. Maybe some of you can buy one in Utah. Um, so from what I understand, there's kind of a range in, in like, I don't know, the, a range in their range? Like how far can they drive on a charge? I would imagine that like a Tesla, that you could drive three hundred miles on a charge is going to be a lot different than a Leaf that you can drive sixty miles on a charge or whatever it is. Is that, is that right?
Yes, you're absolutely correct. So, um, the DC Fast Charger that we have has two different plugs on it. It only charges one car at a time. It has two different plugs, has what they call a combo connector. Um, and then they have another one that's called Chotamo. And between those two plugs, it covers all of the electric vehicles out there except Tesla. Tesla has, is like Apple. They have their own special plug. Um, what they, eh, the, so if you're, if you're looking at the different automobile makers, the, what you really look at is the battery size on those. And it could be anywhere between a pure electric vehicle or a plug-in hybrid. Um, the Nissan Leaf, I believe, comes in a twenty-four or thirty-six kilowatt hour battery. So if they u- it comes in at about that size. Um, which will get you about a hundred and twenty mile range on it. Um, the Tesla comes between an eighty-five and a hundred. I think they may even have some seventies kilowatt hour batteries. And if you can get, you get pretty close to about four miles per kilowatt hour. And so if you're looking at a hundred kilowatt hours, you're getting over three hundred miles on it. Where a Nissan Leaf, you're about a hundred and twenty miles.
But you can't charge a Tesla at our stations.
You can, you can charge a Tesla with an adapter on our trickle chargers. Um.
Takes a long time.
But all of the other vehicles, a Leaf, the BMWs, the Chevy Volt, all of those can charge on, on any of the plugs.
And on a DC, on a DC Fast Charge, it's about two hours to fully charge, something like that.
Uh, eh, 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 well, a more accurate way to look at it is you look at the battery size of the car. Our charger, the DC Fast Charger, um, is rated to charge at fifty kilowatt hours per hour. And so if you have a, if you ha- and really what you charge to about eighty percent. So if you're, if you have a fifty kilowatt hour battery, you could charge on our DC Fast Charger within an hour.
Okay.
If you have a hundred kilowatt, it's about two hours. If you have a Nissan Leaf, you're charging in about twenty minutes.
And it's four miles-ish per.
It's a, yeah, it's about three point six to three point eight miles per kilowatt hour, depending on the car.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to do little calculations in my head because.
It's a little fun.
I want to kind of compare it to not just the, the cost, but like, eh, eh, what a comparable like gasoline load would be and how much that costs per gallon.
So I actually spoke with a, um, a finance director that works for a municipality in Colorado at a local seminar. Um, in this Colorado municipality, uh, this, this gentleman works for a very conservative municipality there. And he did this enormous analysis and found that, um, electric vehicles, um, the energy it takes, or if you were to, the money it takes to charge electric vehicles is about twenty percent of the cost it takes to put gasoline into a normal gasoline engine. And so when you look at the miles per gallon equivalent that you see on electric vehicles, they're going to be like a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty miles per gallon equivalent because they are basically, um, are about five times more efficient than gasoline engines.
And the downside is you can fill up your gasoline car in forty-five seconds where, okay.
Yep.
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. See no more questions?
Great. Thank you.
I will open the public hearing on this issue. If there's anyone present who would like to address counsel regarding this issue, please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on this. Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to take a five-minute break.
You have a motion? Councilmember Burton?
I'd like to second his motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We have one, two, three, four ayes and two noes.
Who's the nose?
The nose were. Who, who is the third noe? So we will take a five-minute break. Sorry. But we've been sitting up here for a while. That's a good one.
But we're raising the impact from this water.
We've got one more minute. Like to reconvene our city council meeting. Councilmember Jacob?
Mayor, I would like to rearrange the agenda just a little bit, bring item F up next, because we just made these good folks wait five minutes for us to do the stuff we had to do personally. So, I would love to move item F up and up a notch to the next item on the agenda and let E slide down a slot. Consider that a motion.
I second that.
We have a motion to move item eight F up, and we have a second discussion to that motion. We need a clerk, don't we? All in favor of doing that?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, with that, there's a public hearing, item eight F, receive public comments only regarding a proposed general plan land use map amendment for 221 acres of property from low-density residential, medium-density residential, high-density residential, neighborhood commercial, community commercial, parks and open land, and public facilities to medium-density residential, very high-density residential, and community commercial, and rezone from S C dash one R dash one dash ten E parentheses S Z C close parentheses P dash F, A dash twenty, and L S F R zones to P C planned community zone for Ocker Mountain Resort located at approximately nine thousand south U one eleven highway. Ocker Mountain Resort LLC, my任child applicant, Scott Langford. What I would, before you start, Scott, what I would encourage all those that wish to participate in this is if they have questions, we would like our clerk to note those questions. And I would like those questions then to be answered by staff over the next time period, and then have those questions posted on our website, the answers to those questions, excuse me. So, those questions can be made available to everyone, the answers to those. And so, with that, Scott, we will turn the time to you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council and the residents here. I'm going to take just a few minutes at the beginning of this discussion to talk about land use in general. I know that if you don't deal with this on a day-to-day basis, this is really foreign. And in particular, the P C zoning district has some subtle nuances not typical of typical zoning. And so, after I give that brief overview of West Jordan's process and land use, I'll turn the time over with your permission, Mayor, to the applicant. It is their application and their proposed development. They'll give a brief presentation of their proposal. And then, following the applicant, we've got Ray McCandless, our senior planner, who's worked in detail with this proposal, and he'll be able to give a brief summary of staff's analysis of the proposal, as well as what the planning commission found with their review of this project. So, real broad overview. And hopefully, the intent of this, Mayor and council, is to provide some framework and context of this specific application. But I'm not going to talk about anything specific to Ocker Mountain Resort. The general plan, per state law, is defined as this. I'm not going to read it in detail, but basically, it's a comprehensive, comprehensive, long-range plan that cities use to produce a good working community. And there's a lot of elements that go into a general plan. These do change from city to city, but for West Jordan, we've got everything from land use all the way down to sustainability. We've spent years in crafting and creating this general plan, and we focused in on different aspects of good community development. All of this comes together, and it creates great community. And as a, and that's the overall intent of a general plan. So, there's two elements to a general plan. You've got the text, and you've got maps. The maps are graphic illustrations of that text. And you've got our future land use map, which I've got on the screen. We have our transportation master plan. We've got our parks and recreation and open space plan. And those are, if you talk about amendments to the general plan, those are typically what we're talking about, just like tonight. We're talking about an amendment to our general plan, our future land use map specifically. So, if you look at the intent or the purpose of the future land use map, it's just a geographic representation of the goals and policies outlined in the text of the general plan. Within each category, for example, residential, I've got a chart here from our general plan, page twenty-four, to be specific. We've got our different density designations for residential development. And each color on our land use map ties specifically to one of these categories. For example, medium density is three point one to five units per acre. And that's a wide range. And you can see the corresponding zoning districts, and I'll get to zoning here in just a second. You can see the corresponding zoning districts that correlate with that specific category. So, a medium density could have everything from R one eight all the way up to 10,000 square foot lots or quarter acre lots. So, that lays the groundwork. That's the foundation. It's a guide. And I don't want to skip over this second bullet point. We talked about water needs, water impact fees, and so forth earlier on in the meeting. The general plan is really, really important in forecasting future needs of the city, whether it be utility needs, water sewer, or even transportation networks. And so, when somebody comes and proposes a change to our future land use map, we do an analysis to make sure that we have the capacity to support those changes. And you'll see that listed in your staff report. What a future land use map is not, it is not a zoning map. There is a very distinct legal difference between a land use map and a zoning map. And I'll show that here in just a second. It does not grant a landowner's entitlement to develop in a certain way. So, zoning, zoning is very similar to our land use map, and there's a reason why the two get confused. You have a map and you have texts. Maps, the zoning map, if you pull up our West Jordan interactive map, you'll see the city's divided up into all sorts of different districts, from regional commercial at Jordan Landing all the way down to single-family residential use and agricultural use. And those do give very specific development rights to property owners. To support those maps, we have text or zoning ordinance that gets into the nitty-gritty of lot size, setbacks, building height, all of those things. And then, important to that, it sets forth procedures in how to administer those laws adopted by the council. So, briefly, this is an area of the city that the council looked at, I think it was last year, in our big E D A. And you can see that it's vacant, a lot of vacant land. Well, our general plan, our future land use map for that area has a broad, you know, with the broad brush, we painted different land uses that we are going to hope land there eventually someday. If you compare the future land use map to actually what the zoning map shows, which is this next slide, there's not a whole lot, property owners can actually go out and build today. The vast majority of that area is zone A twenty, which is agricultural, minimum 20 acres lot size. So, you can see that it takes time to develop these plans. Now, these are zoning districts right here. Could somebody come in and propose a commercial development at the corner of Ninetieth South and U one eleven today? Yeah, they do have some legal right to develop in that fashion today, because they have the zoning in place. So, oftentimes, you'll see the future land use map with the zoning districts overlaid on the top. And that provides context. And state law does require correlation and connection between the two. So, zoning does have some shortcomings. It can be inflexible. It can be hard. The whole premise behind zoning is to separate land uses into neat little silos or boxes. And that's good, if you don't want to live next to a pig farm, right? That protects residents. It protects property values. But it also has some negative or aspects or some cons to Euclidean zoning, going all the way back to Euclid versus Ambler back in 1926. But it can, it can, it can be inefficient. It can increase the cost of utilities and infrastructure to serve properties. And despite our best efforts, typical Euclidean zoning can lead to, you know, rubber stamped housing tracks that you can barely tell your neighbor's house from your own, which is why it's very good that here in West Jordan, we have what we call performance zones. We have two of them specifically. We have our P C or planned community zone. We also have our planned residential development. And these are performance-based zones where we, for lack of better term, I'm not going to read this slide, but it's all about building community. We try to do our best to incentivize large track development where we have a variety of uses that, over time, will be complementary and be vibrant and provide a good place for West Jordan. And so, we've got a number of large P C developments on the west side of West Jordan. It's the benefit of having these big tracts of property that developers can come in and prepare. The Highlands Master Plan is a 420-acre master plan. That's one of our newer master plans, and it has a mixture of uses from the New Smiths Market Place to townhomes to the school. Fox Hall Elementary School is part of that. So, as a professional planner, we love to see master planned communities. And so, we've done our best to incentivize these P C zones. Now, the most important slide I have to show is my final slide to show to the council and to the citizens here is this one right here. It's messy, I know, but it shows the process associated with our performance-based zones. Tonight, it's step one. I would call it one A. We're right here at the top. So, the particular application that you have before you tonight went to the planning commission in a public hearing format. The planning commission in a six-one vote forwarded a recommendation to the city council to consider the proposed P C zone. This is the first of two meetings that the council will have, at least two meetings. The council does have the ability to stretch it forward if needs be. But the particular application includes a land use map amendment, a rezone to the P C zone, and again, by ordinance, it requires a concept plan. Now, if the council, after they received comment tonight, and proceeds to have discussion on the next council meeting, which is the 24th, if it is approved on the 24th, the developer will have to go through the next round of public hearings and provide a higher level of detail. Now, you'll see here in a minute that the, this particular applicant has provided quite a bit of detail for a concept plan. Tonight's purpose before the council is to look at the land use in general. Is it appropriate for low, medium, and high density in this 220 acres? Now, our ordinance also stipulates that the developments in the P C zone needs to provide a high level of architecture and amenities and all of those things. And so, that is one of the reasons why the developers provided a finer grain concept plan than normal. And that's to illustrate to you that this is indeed meeting the purposes and intent of the planned community zone. The details, the fine-grained details of, that are associated with normal zoning, lot size, architecture, setbacks, building height, those types of things, those will come at a future date, even though that you have some of those as a concept before you tonight. But the actual details will be presented during this preliminary development plan, which is step two. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or turn it over to the applicant.
Any questions from council at this time? Why don't we have the applicant?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Greg Hawes. I work for SOMAS. Our address is, do you want my address? You need my address? Forty-one seventy-nine South River Boat Road, Salt Lake City, Utah. I appreciate your time. I'm going to be as brief as I can, but give you enough information that maybe we can answer some of the questions that the public may have as well. I'd love to hear from them as well. I appreciate your efforts to organize the town hall meeting. Councilman Burton, it was great to be able to hear from some of the residents. And we're open. We're here to listen tonight. Our project is located just east of Highway one eleven off of Baxus Highway, between Eighty-Six South and Ninetieth South. And the eastern boundary is sixty-four hundred west. Like Scott mentioned, there's existing zoning on the ground, some R one ten on the eastern, on the northern portion. There's public facilities. There's A one twenty. And then some single large, low, L S is low-density, single-family residential. We are proposing to adopt, to adopt planned community zone on this property. Majority of the property will be medium-density residential, 192 acres. There's approximately 17.2 acres of very high density. I'll explain what those are. And there's a piece of commercial on the corner of Highway one eleven and Ninetieth South. And the blue box on sixty-four hundred west is property that's owned by the Jordan School District. That's a 35-acre parcel, and is anticipated to be a middle school and an elementary school. We are concerned, we want to be a good neighbor. And so, we've taken a lot of effort to try and be compatible with the existing residential developments to the north and to the east of the project. You can see that there are, let me see if I can get the laser pointer here. Which button is it, Scott? The green button? These, this development off of Ninetieth, off of Highway one eleven and off of eighty-six hundred south is about 3.8 acres to the, 3.8 units per acre. This is 4.5. This is 19. This development's 6.3. The developments east of sixty-four hundred west are 3.1 units per acre, 2.8 units per acre, and 3.2. The vast majority of our project is about 3.4 units to the acre. This is another exhibit that shows kind of, his colors in that were very similar in density to the existing neighborhoods to the north and to the east. This is our land plan. I don't want to get lost too far in the weeds here, but what we've done is intentional. We've tried to create a place that's going to be special. There's a very large amenity core in the middle of this project with the loop road around it, large clubhouse. I'll get into some of the details here in a minute. The large, the highest density, it fits right onto those amenity cores for, it's intentional. So, our highest densities are right around this amenity core. If you kind of blur your eyes, you can see the color, the colors of the lots. The purple and the blues are 6,000 and 7,000 square foot lots. We have eights, nines, and tens. The greens are 9,000 square foot lots. So, they're very similar in size to the projects to the north, actually larger, they're larger lots than the developments to the north. And then, we have a school site and a potential church site, which would be a buffer. But you can see that we've tried really hard to buffer the majority of the densities from the existing residences from, by using a school, a church, and the drainage corridor. We're proposing approximately 1,100 units on this property. It's about five units to the acre overall. The general, the transportation master plan for West Jordan identifies 67th West as a collector. We've accommodated that in our plans. We also are providing residential local streets. These are 50 feet wide. They comply with your city standards. We're not asking for anything different. The project will be very pedestrian, very walkable. We want people to be able to walk off of the street experience, as well as on-street. You can see what's represented here in this diagram. All those dashed lines are off-street trails and passeos. People will always be, obviously be able to walk on-street as well to the amenities in the middle. This is an example of our very high-density residential. These are seniors, age-restricted units. They'll be three stories tall. They're podium parked. All the parking will be underneath. We have elevator shafts that go up to the upper levels. And they're very nice units. They'll be very nice. This is some examples, some typical examples of larger lot product. We want this place to, this community to feel, feel good. Again, we're not going to get into architectural standards. That comes at a later date. So, we're not going to argue about shutters and doorknobs tonight, but just to give you a flavor of what we're talking about. Very extensive open space in this project. I've worked for hundreds of clients over the last 20 years. I've never had a client approach me with this kind of extensive open space package. This is unprecedented for me. And they really want to create a place that people have essentially every amenity they can think of to use. This is just a list. I won't go through every one of this, every, everything on this list. You can see that in your packet. But it's an extremely extensive collection of open space amenities. Just a detail of the large clubhouse area has an indoor pool and an outdoor pool, basketball courts, racquetball. There's plazas, amphitheaters, putting greens. We have an ice ribbon, tennis courts, jogging track, basketball courts, arts and crafts room. We have a, on the east end of the project, we have another clubhouse, a smaller clubhouse with a pool and a lazy river, some tennis, some pickleball courts and volleyball courts, very highly amenitized. Just some imagery of some of the things we're talking about, the amphitheater. We have a conservatory, a dog park, frisbee golf, fitness room. We have an events room. Hammocking's really big right now. So, we're having some hammock grottos throughout the, throughout the community, sand volleyball, horseshoe pits, pavilions, pools. We have an orchard along Barney's Creek, pickleball, putting green, tennis courts, and so forth. This is artistic, this is our architect's rendering of what the clubhouse will look like. It's a very large facility. The clubhouse will be free for those people who purchase a home in our community, but will also be open for the public. The public can buy a membership to attend this clubhouse, as well as all the other amenities in the community. Another view of what that clubhouse might look like. Then on the corner, we have about approximately 10 acres of retail. We've spent a lot of time talking to retail brokers. We've gone up and down in terms of scale and how big to make this retail site. And retail's hard to fill these days. So, we feel like, we feel like this is a sustainable-sized retail development on the corner of our project. And we will be doing this project in four phases. You can see we've broken that out. The initial phase, we will build the clubhouse and the vast majority of the amenities up front. And phase two is the eastern portion of the, let me go back. Phase two is the eastern portion. Then phase three will jump the drainage way and build the third phase up adjacent to the northern neighborhood. And then finally, or, well, phase four actually could come earlier. These aren't intended to be sequential. They could come at any, at any point. So, I'm here to answer any questions you might have. That's all I have. Actually, do you want to turn the time to Ray?
Do we have any questions from council members? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. So, the, if you can go back, not so much the phasing, but the lot. Can we get there? Sorry.
That's okay.
That one. So, my question is, I, what size of homes, like, for me, the 6,000, 7,000 square foot lots seem kind of small. And we have some neighborhoods that are on small lots where larger than what I think should fit on a lot that size. And we've got some issues where the driveway, cars that park in their driveway overhang the sidewalk because there's not a, there's not enough setback on the front. So, how do you see the 6,000 and 7,000 square foot lots?
Well, again, we'll address all of the setbacks by lot at the next stage. Our anticipation is that we'll have at least five yards, five-foot side yards, 20-foot front yard, so that you're not getting a garage door too close, and they can't park their car fully in their own driveway. But again, those are, those are details we're willing to discuss and listen to you and your guidance and direction. And I work with dozens of builders right now. Dr. Horton, Edge Homes, and they're building nice product. They're building good product that fits on 6,000. There's a lot of lots that are 3,200 square feet. So, I mean, these, these are not the smallest lots in the market that we see.
Yeah, and I realize the concept is not, we're just talking the zoning and amendments for this public hearing. Has there been any consideration or study, because I know that retail is very hard, of maybe having a, an office complex or something that's more, less retail, more work-related?
We're completely open to that.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor. I think one of the biggest concerns I've heard over the past few weeks is the word "very high density." And that's the zoning that we're going to be talking about tonight, and then next week we make the decision. Can you give us an idea of why, in your concept, and we're not talking concept to vote on the concept, but we're talking about zoning, why would you need very high density compared to just high density? What are the decisions made there for that?
Your threshold for between very high and high, 10 units to the acre is your threshold between high and very high. A simple townhome, you're in 12 to 14 units per acre. So, when you're getting seniors housing that's podium parked with three levels, you're into the 25, 26 units per acre range. It's the nature of that product that just bumps us into the very high-density category. It's, it's, it's the nature of that product that that just bumps us into the very high-density category. There's no way to to um feasibly build that product in a, in a, in a density that's lower than that. Thank you.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Oh, excuse me, Councilmember Jacob. Thank you. Um, I I was going to save this for later when we had staff up again, but uh for Scott, could you explain, uh, just, you did a great overview of zoning and things, but why the concept plan is binding in a performance-based zone as opposed to a Euclidean zone where we're just, quote-unquote, just looking at zoning? So explain a little bit more about what the decision is that we're faced with with this particular uh application.
So, the concept plan uh provides the the ranges, and we should probably go back to a map more like this where where the the concept sets sets the framework. Uh, the developer has two years. The, if on the twenty-fourth, the council decides to approve the zoning, for example, with the concept plan, they don't have entitlement to go ahead and subdivide property and start building homes. They need to come in and follow that that concept plan associated with this rezone and uh per- and and create a preliminary development plan is is the the correct verbiage where we can talk about home size, setbacks, specific architecture, specific amenities, and at that point, if the council adopts the preliminary development plan, then, then they have the the land development entitlement to go ahead and subdivide and start, start working on that. An important aspect of of approving a development plan is a development agreement. And the council has the the ability in in working with the developer to establish an agreement that talks about um the phasing, for example. Uh, Mr. Hawes brought up the phasing. You, we can nail that down. Who pays for what as far as off-site utility? Uh, the the lion's share of the the roads and the 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 infrastructure needed to serve this pro- this this development is going to be on the developer's dime, which includes some very significant uh uh infrastructure, including Ninety South, Eighty-Six South. Uh, there, there's a lot of, a lot of costs associated with developing uh out on this side of of town, so. I don't know if that answered your question fully, Councilman? More or less? Okay. So it's important, the concept plan is important, but but the the residents and the council needs to know that you're more or less approving this with with a general agreement that that you you're comfortable with the concept plan, and with that, we can work on the development agreement and development plan to to really nail down the details.
I'm going to jump in here before Councilmember Whitelock, but you mentioned that if we did pass this uh plan community, he's got two years to to do what again?
He has two years to bring back a preliminary development plan, which is a even more detailed version of what you see on his concept plan.
Okay, but if, uh, a- and again, what we're seeing here is a concept plan, which means, concept means it can change.
It can.
Um, so what if we were to have him bring a development agreement in ahead of the change in zoning? The development agreement is going to say exactly what's going to be in that space. Is that correct?
We could do that. In fact, uh, Mr. Wall and I have talked about that. Uh, we do have some some time uh between now and the twenty-fourth where we could uh potentially craft something that would give the council some comfort, give the developers some comfort, uh, and that that is certainly a possibility, Mayor.
Because what what I've seen with what, the the types of buildings that would go in there are, they look good. And however, I would like to make sure of what we are approving to go in there actually before we change the zoning. So with that said, Councilmember Whitelock, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Okay, um, so we know that society is aging. We know that, so I already know that portion, but my question is a lot of your high-density in this development is assisted living and over fifty-five. So have you done a market analysis to see that for that area, the demand is there because I would be very disappointed if we said yes, and then you came back and said, oh, turns out people over fifty-five don't want to live in that area. So what market analysis has been done?
Yeah, we've had, we've done extensive market research. Um, initially, we had anticipated the entire two hundred acres would be age-restricted, and the market, the market research didn't dictate that that would be uh financially feasible, so that's why we've reduced the amount of units um that are age-restricted. There's enough demand, there's actually, the demand is growing, but in the next five years, we we feel very confident that we have enough age-restricted units to satisfy the demand in this area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more questions from council to staff, I think at this time we will open this up to public hearing. There will only be thirty minutes at this time for comments. Excuse me? Say again? What are we talking about? Where are you? Oh. Ray McCandless, you had, sorry, your name didn't pop up on my little screen here.
Not a problem. Mayor, members of the council, I think in the interest of time, what we'll do is just, I think a lot of things that I was originally going to talk about have already been discussed. And so in the interest of time, I think what I'll do is just go in and start talking about uh what's on the ground uh currently, and then what's what's proposed, uh just to give you a sense for what the densities are in the surrounding properties. And we're just going to run through a a few slides here. This is a copy or or just an overhead of the uh the property. It shows the two hundred acres. The property that's to the north is is basically single-family residential development. The Bridgeport subdivision is on R one six C, but most of the lots in that zone are are over eight thousand square feet. The Oaks at Jordan Hills Village is actually part of the the uh the Oaks Plan Community. It's zoned P C. Over to the the east is the Three Forks subdivision. It's, and the Copperfield subdivisions, which are uh zoned the R one ten, so all the lots in those uh those subdivisions are over ten thousand square feet. As you can see, I'll go to the next slide. The next slide just shows the zoning on the, on the property. As you can see here, there's, on the adjoining piece, there's also a little piece of property that's on S C one, so neighborhood commercial zoning district. There's a, on the property itself, there are five zoning districts. There's an S C one zoning district here, um, R one ten E Z C. The Z C means there's zoning conditions, ten thousand square foot lot minimums. This piece of property here is kind of hard to see, but it's actually zoned A A twenty, which is considered a, and Scott mentioned it, the holding zone for future development. There was at one time a a plan to put a school district here in the area that's zoned for public facilities. Uh, but that's since been moved over to this area. The school district owns this, as as Greg had mentioned. I think there's roughly thirty-five acres in that that site. This is an old west-side zoning district. It's called the Low Density Single Family Residential Zone. Again, it's a west-side zoning district. It's no longer in effect. And as has been mentioned before, the the request is to zone the entire property to a plan commer- or a P C zoning dis- plan community zoning district. This is our current zoning map. I want to, there's a little ribbon of parks and open lands that runs through here. The property basically slopes from west to east. Uh, the only really defining feature on the property is that wash that runs through this, the center of the property. Um, it's, it currently, again, has that Parks and Open Lands uh designation on it. The area that's up here on is zoned and also has a land use designation of the S C one district. To the south, uh, this area is zoned low, or is shown on the the future land use map as low-density residential, medium-density residential, and then high-density residential, community cur- commercial in that corner at the intersection of Ninety Ninety South and U one eleven. It, just in in looking at the, at this, uh, from one side to the other, it appears that the intent was to have the community commercial here and then uh transition towards the east with lower density as you get closer to the established uh neighborhoods on the the north and east. One thing I need, would like to point out, though, is that on the future land use map, the area that's that's on the north side of the wash is currently designated as medium-density residential. This is the land use map that the applicant is proposing. The area that's right here is um this, the assisted living. These three areas here, here and here would be for senior housing. And then it's, it's kind of hard to see, but right in here, this is market rate, townhomes or condominiums. And as the applicant has submitted, uh, he is, uh, they have included this into the into the area that's, that is designated as medium-density. Again, the commercial is located here on this corner. We've already talked about uh this map. Again, this is where the senior housing is gonna, is proposed to be located, rough Ninety South and then close to the recreational amenities. The condominiums or townhomes located just uh next, again, next to those residential or the recreational amenities. The assisted living facility to be located north, on the north side of the wash. Then the the commercial. We've already talked about the phasing plan. Um, this is just a a slide that gives you a general idea of what the the rough densities are around the project, at least in those established uh residential neighborhoods. Now, this, this number here, the two-point-nine dwelling units per acre is, and I I need to make this clear because this is just the the density of the single-family residential um you, uh, land uses that are in that area. Uh, the applicant, it it included this area as part of that his, uh, that density calculation, but just considering the uh the single-family residential, which also includes the open space, uh, it's roughly a two-point-nine dwelling units per acre. So if you look at some of these other projects that are to the north, there's the Bridgeport, comes in at uh roughly three, three and a half units per acre. The Oaks at Jordan Hills Village, a little smaller lots, a little higher density at four-point-four-three. Phase ten is five-point-seven-five. The Oaks at Jordan Hills, phase nine, six-point-three-oh. These are a little, on the east side of the project, the densities are a little, little lower, two-point-seventy, two-point-six-seven, two-point-one-nine. So we mentioned that the the density is a little higher with those. Let me just take a look here at my notes. Is going to be higher in the, the medium dens- or in these, these areas where uh the multifamily is is proposed. Uh, the, one of the other changes, a couple of changes that the applicant is is requesting to make is just, again, the elimination of this little neighborhood commercial piece here, and then reducing the size of that commercial on that side. And if we were to just uh superimpose what the applicant is proposing on the future land use map, this is, again, what it would look like. Uh, there's a couple of things that we would like to, if the planning, if the city council moves forward with this, that we'd like to see tweaked on this map. Uh, the first thing is the, that we would like to see this parks and open lands designation along the wash just kept as it is, because it just makes sense to to do that. Uh, the other thing that we would like to see, rather than to to convolute the density ranges here, would be to just add the market rate townhomes to the very high-density residential areas on that map, so we would really see the addition of the parks and open land, the very high-density for the multifamily residential uh community, community commercial designation, and then the rest of it as medium-density residential. So I think we've been through all the other slides that I have here, so unless there's any questions.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you. Um, uh, frequently when we do a Euclidean zone, we're, and for those who don't know what Euclidean means, it's like an R one ten or an R, it's not a planned community where you mix a whole bunch of uses. It's a specific, just whatever. When we're dealing with senior housing or 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 restricted age, we put a senior housing overlay on that chunk. How does that work within a planned community zone? I don't know if I've ever really looked at this. We can't put a senior housing overlay on the whole thing and have it all age-restricted, but can we do it on on the chunks? Uh, one of the concerns that I've heard um over the last few weeks and months, this is kind of percolated, is that, well, they say it's going to be senior housing, but they could just make it apartments or whatever. So is there a senior housing overlay that you can do inside on specific little pieces of a planned community? How does that work?
I don't think that we would, we would take that approach. Uh, the s- the approach that Scott had mentioned through the implementation of a de- uh of a development agreement, I think might be the best way to go to to address that, just to make sure that the senior housing is developed as senior housing.
I I would agree. Certainly, Councilman, we could, we could uh do a P C and then have a senior housing overlay on those chunks, as you, as you call them, and but but the end result, we we could get to that same um uh comfort or or restrictions through a development agreement i- as part of the P C.
Okay. All right, thanks. Okay, uh, Scott, I'm going to go back to you. We have no more questions from the council. Uh, is there anyone else that you would like to have speak, so I don't overlook someone?
I appreciate your patience. This is a, this is a, a lot of acres and a potential uh a big project for the city, so I thank you for taking the the time to listen to us.
Okay. Thank you. With that, then, there will only be thirty minutes for comments during this public hearing. If you're here speaking as a group, you will have five minutes, so please indicate before you were, begin speaking. After the thirty minutes are over, if you did not have the opportunity to speak, you may send your comments to the city clerk, Melanie Briggs. Her card is on the lectern. And once those comments are in, we want to make sure that each council member gets a copy of those comments. Again, as I noted earlier, if you have questions that can be answered by staff, our clerk will take those as part of the recording, and we will try to get those answered and posted on our website as well, so that questions can be answered if you have questions. So with that, I will open the public hearing, and I will begin with the, those that have signed up. And the first one I have is Valerie Pedego. Hopefully I said that right. Valerie?
Okay, so I am Valerie Pedego, and I have, do you need my address? Do you need all that information? Okay, you got it. Okay. So I have taken some notes from the general plan, um, and you used the word "good working community". Right now, we are not so good working out there as is, and to add fifty-two hundred people to our community is poor planning. I do not believe that that would be something beneficial to West Jordan. So in the general plan, goal four, policy one, it says to encourage diversity of housing density. According to your own notes, we have the medium-density, the very small lots, we have the starter homes, we have um my lots, the medium-density, I'm on in the Three Forks area, and we have the condos, and we have apartment buildings. We have diversity in our area. I don't know that changing from our low-density zoning is going to encourage people coming from these starter homes to stay in West Jordan. from these starter homes to stay in West Jordan. Our options are limited when you have that choice of where you want to go. You can go to Harriman, you can go to South Jordan, you can go to Riverton. You don't stay because there isn't those upgrades or out-of-the-starter-home places to go. So we already meet that. Goal four, policy two, is similar to an existing and adjacent residential development. We're close in there, but I don't, currently it's zoned for low-density. And to change all that to medium-density at almost the very smallest required to call it low-density or medium-density, those houses are going to be stacked on top of each other. And again, bringing that many people into that community, especially in the next couple of years, is a poor choice, is poor planning. Keeping it on the larger lots rather than the smaller lots will encourage longevity in the city. One other thing, let's see, another thing on page 35, commercial use goal two, it says to provide adequate and accessible commercial uses. And we don't have that. We can't go east or west from where we're at right now in less than 20 minutes or more. Most of my neighbors shop other places because the stores that are existing out there now are so crowded, you can't get what you need. I know you can't think about schools, but putting that many more people into an area that's already crowded, not smart. I hope that our mayor and council members will remember that this is going to affect us directly, and I hope that...
Thank you, Michelle Lee.
I guess you don't need to know where I live, right? Okay. I read over the comments made by the adjacent communities at the West Jordan Planning and Zoning Commission held on August 21st, 2018. Many have voiced concerns over the lot sizes. There are only 13 units, the 1,099 units available for what might be considered low-density. That's 1.18% of the entire project. My husband and I have been looking for lots that meet our needs and can only find those lots in neighboring cities like South Jordan or Riverton. We are looking to find a place in West Jordan and cannot find any lot sizes that are 1/3 acre lots. This tells me that according to policy two, page 70, I am not being provided housing opportunity for someone that has an existing home nearby. The existing development to the east of the proposed planned community is low-density. This concept plan has higher densities throughout, even in areas where the location of lower densities would make sense. The undeveloped property to the south would be more likely developed as high-density, which borders the New Bingham Highway and U-111. The density level would limit the housing product that would be available to the residents. I have concerns with the helm to market rate, which consists of the 108 units, which was placed in the chart as medium-density instead of the very-high density, which was addressed just earlier, just recently by Ray Mick. Anyway, currently there are no commercial centers or mass transit in the area. With the mass transit controlled by another government agency, there is no guarantee of when mass transit will come to the area. With this particular concept plan, there are 17 cul-de-sacs, and the majority of the lots on the cul-de-sacs are high-density. There will be a lot of traffic on the main roads of the development, which will bring greater congestion on the main streets that currently have no streetlights. This does not create a variety of neighborhood types. The majority of the plans are 8,000 square feet or less. While this may provide starter homes, there is not a lot of lot sizes for those to expand out to a greater lot or house. However, I have provided you with a more detailed list of the 2012 comprehensive general plan goals that are conflicting with this development plan. You should see that in your packet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that's wishing to speak, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. My name's David Stephenson. I was curious about this project, so I came to hear what was being proposed. And it's interesting because I'm in a very different demographic. I know there's a lot of folks for families that are looking for lots, looking for big lots. They're looking for places to have big homes and yards and that sort of thing. I'm 59, I'm a lawyer, I'm recently single, and I want that very nice, very-high-density townhome next to great amenities. I play tennis, I like the tennis courts, I like to work out every day, I've got time to go to the gym, I want a very, very nice gym, and I like to get out and run and walk, and I like the amenities. And so there's a demographic out there that wants the very, very high-density thing, and that's me. And there's 360 units, I think there'd be a line of people like me who would want to have the opportunity to live in a community like this with the quality and the diversity which is there. And so having said that, I'm all in favor. I suggest that you do it. I think that, you know, the larger the tracks you have, the better job you can do of master planning and getting the types of diversity you want. But there needs to be diversity for all different sorts of people, not just young families with lots of kids. And so with that, I recommend you do it.
My name is Cheryl Acker, and I am a local Realtor, and I'm here to tell you there is a housing need for this type of project. This has diversity for all types of housing. I agree with the gentleman before, there is a great need for people 55 years and older that are going to other developments on the west side of Mountain View Corridor, out in Daybreak, on their new development that they've already sold out. There's another one in Taylorsville. The 55 and older is a great concept. I applaud the developer on this and the people who've put this together because they have thought of all different types. We want even people that want a townhome, they want a single detached home without having a large yard to do the yard work. They want the community, they want to network with each other, and having a diverse clientele, if you want to call it that, will bring them out along with the amenities as well. I think it's very well-planned out, and I would encourage you guys to approve the zoning change.
Hi, my name's Johnny. I appreciate your time. I know you guys have been here a while, I'm mayor and council members. I am agreeing with the last two comments as well. I think it's great. I lived in San Francisco for six, seven years, went to school there, and also worked after I got done playing baseball there, and this is nothing like San Francisco. Try moving there, trying to find a home under a million dollars, and they are on top of each other. At least you have a garage here. I mean, we didn't even have a garage to park in, so I understand some of the other comments, but when you look at how neat this is, I've already talked to my daughters actually about this, and they're as excited as can be. We've talked about the amenities that will be there, the community. I live just down the street from here, and my wife is, for years since we've moved here, said, "We need to find some families to meet, you know, with our kids and play with our kids." So we're excited as can be and can't wait till this goes up. I understand the concerns, but trust me, if you live in a city like San Francisco, this is nothing like that. And I'm not saying we are San Francisco, but Utah, Salt Lake needs developments like this. The 50 and over like we heard about are just great opportunities. So as a local person in West Jordan that's thrilled to move to this area, I couldn't be happier. I think these things are great, the community, the pool, all those things will be awesome for them. So I appreciate your time and hope that you will move forward with this. Thank you.
I live just to the east of this proposal. I want to read something from Mayor Writing's website. Under city zoning, you published, "I am not a proponent of changing residential zoning in order to provide more high-density housing in the city. I feel the city has its share of the valley's high-density residential housing." So that's from your website. We voted you on those principles. And I'm not necessarily saying that this particular zoning project would not fall under this category, but I want you to take that into consideration as you guys are thinking about moving forward this planning. I think my concerns are that we get a bait and switch, that they've come today, presented beautiful plans, nice architectural designs, and then they move forward with it and the plans change. So hopefully you guys maybe get some different commitments out of the development before you decide if you're going to move forward with it or not. Additionally, we heard from the school district earlier, and we have a huge problem with the school district on the west side. And so it would be really nice if before committing to any sort of rezoning, that we get the school district to let us know what they're going to do with that land. Are they going to build something and when? And then build around the needs of the children, because we clearly have an issue. I'm in, I live right where we can walk to the school right now, and they're going to bus us to a school across Mountain View Corridor right now as part of the proposal of the change of boundaries. Those are my young kids that are going to be going over one of the most dangerous roads in the area. So it'd be really nice to get different commitments prior to moving forward with a plan such as this. Thank you.
Please, no applause. Thank you.
I'm John George, I also live in Copperfield Estates, just across from it. And so my concern is, I was here last year, just I think in July, about the land use map, and there were significant changes made at one of those meetings. A lot of you weren't on the council at the time, and they're like, yeah, this, and then, I mean, as the person, the developer said, "This is a long-term use map. It's not something we change every day." And it seems like with this, this is just another change. And as Mr. Orman said, I mean, they're already requesting a change for additional high-density in this meeting. I mean, if we approve this, we're giving up pretty much all of our control. I think the process needs to be slowed down somewhat, and I think we need to take an opportunity to review, really. I mean, if you make the, you know, the development plan in one week or two weeks, it seems like a pretty small amount of time to do that, to nail things down and to get community comment. I really do appreciate you guys altering your format of your meetings, taking comment, having a couple of weeks, because last year when they did the amendment changes, they just made them and then just slammed it down our throats. There was no discussion, there was just amendments, they're just like, oh, let's draw here and here, and then they approved it. And that was not taking any input from the community, and I think that's a real problem that we have. We need you to represent us. And the developers, they're here to make money, and that's great, and we want to have a community here. We want it something that benefits West Jordan, benefits the residents, brings the type of community we want to have, and we're already here, so I think we do deserve that. And I think some of the things the developer talks about is the, you know, the density is similar to the neighborhoods next door. On that map, they did mention that, you know, this does include all of their amenities sections, and that's probably 10, 20, 30, 40 acres that they're including in their densities. I think that would push that number up even further. And I think as a community, we'd like to see that number pushed down closer to two rather than up to three, three and a half, where it probably realistically lies at this point. And so I think this is kind of one of the big problems that we have. And then I look at the very-high-density with the age restrictions. I mean, there was 445 units, I think, there, and I think they have some underground parking, which I think is great, but that's a big issue. If you look across the street of New Bingham Highway to the apartment complexes there, if you've ever driven over there, there's literally hundreds of cars on the streets every day, parked night and day, and it's a mess. I mean, we don't have the room for those in that development with all those back, out and backs and everything. I think that's something that we did a plan for, and with this high-density, we're going to have that same thing, and it's just going to be a big problem. So I think we need to maybe tap the brakes on it and just see what we can plan out first and not necessarily make a vote, just hurry, rush, get it done. I mean, I've lived here for 10 years, nothing's happened with that land. There's no reason we can't wait a couple of months to figure out what's really best for the community. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Carl Banks, and I live just to the east of the development, and I have a couple of concerns with it. One is once the zoning's changed, we don't have anything to hold the developer to what their plans are. I mean, once the zoning's changed, it's changed, and it can become anything, so that kind of is a concern to us or to me. What they're proposing is really nice, but what they're proposing isn't necessarily what we're going to end up with, so that's one real concern that I have. The other concern is everybody's wanting the 55 and older, which I agree with, because I'm older than 55 also, but the ones that I'm aware, or a lot of them that I'm aware of, you can, you only have to have one person that's 55 and older in the house or in whatever apartment or whatever they're in. And so you can move grandpa in and have a house full of kids. So is it really a 55 and older? We should, I believe we should have some type of restriction if they are going to do it, that they have to be held to that. So I think the gym's concerns or talking about going ahead and coming up with a more finalized plan before you rezone the property would be, you know, a really good thing. Some of the high-density neighborhoods in West Jordan are, if you drive through them, they do not look very nice, so if they are going to have a high-density, what about some type of HOA to guarantee that that community is going to stay decent? I know it was compared to Daybreak, which is a very nice community, but they all have HOAs, and they're all held to decent standards rather than driving through a neighborhood with cars all over and grass that's dead, and, because we have quite a few of them in West Jordan if you drive around. And hopefully that, if it does become, you know, the community that it's proposed, that it doesn't turn into that, because we moved out of one neighborhood hoping to find a nice one, so we spent a fair amount of money for a house across the street, and we hate for that to start to become rundown and become all rental properties and become a mess. Yeah, and that's really about all I have to say, so hopefully you'll, you know, do what's in everybody's best interest, so thank you.
My name is Matthew Smith. I live at 6676 Brook Maple Way. What I like about this development is that there are amenities, and a ton of amenities, which are greatly needed west of Mountain View. We have pretty much nothing in terms of amenities right now. But what concerns I have, and I know that a lot of other people have, are with an increase in density, people's biggest concerns are east-west traffic in schools, at least my concerns are. So the question I have in terms of east-west traffic, I know that they're going to put in Ninetieth with this, but where it ties into New Bingham, what's the plan there and when is that going to happen? Will anything happen there to improve traffic? Also with schools, I know you can't consider that in your decision, but I would like the staff to work with the school district and ask them what the plan is for this property here. Unfortunately, there is a history in this area of the school district selling off land that they own that is zoned public facilities. There was a high school property that they sold off most of, so I would like to know what's going to happen for sure and what the timetable is for this property. And there's a 10-acre plot at 8,200 South and 6,700 West. Are those going to be schools, or is everybody going to be bussed with boundary changes? Another question I have, the, one of the problems I have with the new high-density developments going in is they seem to be four stories and that they're very imposing. If there are going to be three-story buildings plus a parking underneath that, I wonder if it's going to be underground parking or on-street parking, that may be a detail for another time, but that's a question I have. And then my biggest question is that, again, if they can't sell age-restricted properties or if that's not viable, for example, if another age-restricted property comes in nearby, then there won't be demand here. We saw that when Smiths came in, the developer for the Ocker, for the Jordan Hills Villages, which is the Oaks, the Sycamores, and the Maples, their commercial property that they were going to put in a grocery store, then they said, "We don't, nobody's going to buy it there because Smiths is there, and so we're just going to put homes in there," and that's what the council agreed to. So I'm afraid that that might happen again. So thank you for your time. So thank you for your time.
Hello again. My name is Nikki George. I live just to the east of the plot of land that we're discussing tonight. I've heard a lot of concern from our city leadership about mandates for having bigger areas for starter families to be able to come out. So I just decided to look at a map. Within a two-mile radius of this location, just the functioning apartments, we've got five separate ones just nearby, not to mention townhomes and those that are under constriction, which are not just a few. So I'm worried that instead of us staying balanced, we're actually going a little bit the opposite direction. I also have had concerns about the school district, and I know that that's not something that you guys can answer, so I asked the school district. They have no plans for building any schools without a bond. We know that the last bond was voted down. So that's something that concerns me. I'm also concerned that these 55 and older communities have no guarantee that all residents are 55 and older. So again, it could put an undue strain on our schools that we're just not even calculating in. I was concerned when I wrote letters to each member of the city council, expressing some of my concerns after the planning meeting, because several comments came back and said, wow, this is the first I've heard of it. You're the first person to comment. And so I, just for, I guess, a little bit of an experiment, decided to put up a poll to ask, are there other people who maybe aren't taking the time to write letters but who really do care and don't want this specific plan? And within a 48-hour period, we had over 500 names who had signed this petition. So I do think that we want to represent the masses of people. I don't think that this is a bad plan. I think that we're on the right track, and I'm thrilled to hear that the developer is willing to work with us. I just hope that as a council, you'll take some of those concerns about density into consideration, and maybe we can meet in the middle. I think that the amenities are grand and almost too, too good to believe, and I hope that perhaps we could maybe scale some of that down and increase some of the lot size and maybe meet in the middle. I also hear a constant argument about millennials don't want land. I think you need to look at millennials who live in suburbs, and I think that you would find a different answer there. So I appreciate your thought and attention to this and hope that we can work together to work something out. Thank you so much.
Hi. My name's Jill Morley, and I live off of 90th, 90th South and 27th West. First, I just wanted to say that I think, you know, sometimes we're a little bit, a little bit naive in thinking that we don't need more housing. We are in a housing crisis in Utah, and most people know that, that the highs, the pricing, prices for the houses are going up and that the quantity is going down. So I do recognize that we do need to do something. We do need to build, but I don't think that high-density or medium-density, I don't even like the median density, to be honest with you, is the answer. And why does it all fall on West Jordan? A couple of months ago, this, I don't know if this was the same developer, but we had this huge uproar in Harriman, and Harriman voted that down. They didn't want the high-density housing. And so I look at all across West Jordan, and I see high-density popping up all over the place. In my area, specifically kind of by the West Jordan Hospital, there's a high-density area that just popped up right there, and I've noticed an influx in the traffic. And 90th South, I mean, everyone's telling you the east and west is awful, but infrastructure is something that we really need to be thinking about. At any given time, I was told that only six police officers in West Jordan are on the streets. Three of them are patrolling, and three of them are doing traffic stops and that bit. And I know that they can change from one to the other, but in any given moment, you call the police or you need any other type of, any public support, we're spread thin as it is. And I feel like when we're adding all of these high-density housing and higher populations, we really need to be thinking about these kind of things instead of having it be an afterthought. I would love to have a pre-plan of how we're going to handle all of that traffic going back and forth. I'd love to hear how we're going to handle that with the police and fire and all of these other infrastructure issues that we have, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
We still have about five minutes if anyone else would like to address the council on this issue.
I'm June Christie Anderson, 6417 West, 7800 South, and I want to speak to a couple of issues and much is the same as has already been stated. However, we have a farm on the corner of 7864, and when they came in with the plan to go down our west side, and there were quite a few of those lots that were 7,000 square feet, we had the same kind of angst that I'm hearing here. And the houses that actually went in on those lots are 300-plus homes. They may not have a lot of outdoor space, but they're very nice. And so I would have to say that I don't feel the angst about the medium-density size of the lot and the type of home that might go in, because I think it could be very well-constructed, a good, good subdivision. I think I am concerned about maintaining the open space down the wash. When the Highlands came in around us, that was kind of in the proposal, that there would be more open space, and all of a sudden the wash is all coverted in and buildings going over the top, and the Highlands did not meet their burden of open space. It just got closed in, and that could potentially happen here. I think I would be very concerned with that because it can happen, and once it's gone, you can't get it back. Schools, I actually teach over in West Valley at Granger High School. That's an issue. Granger High School, the new was built with, for 2,600 kids and opened the first year with over 3,000. So we know that the Copper Hills and some of those out here have 3,000 kind of populations of high school kids, and, and every school out here is just bulging at the seams. Tough issue keeping teachers, and there's just a lot of, lot of things to consider. I really realize that that's not part of something that you can look at prior to the actual development, but it will be a future problem. And so I'm not sure quite how to respond to that other than throw it out there and say, you know, we do have to think. I like the idea of the, only the pockets of high-density housing being senior, if there could be some kind of guarantee that that's actually what they would be and not sometime in the future become something else. So all in all, I think there's some real pluses about this community, but we should be wary as we're putting it in and, and making those final moves. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I want to thank everyone that spoke and let you know, too, that anyone that would like to submit anything in writing, please do so to our clerk, and she will make sure that we each get a copy of that. She's going to make sure that each of the questions that were answered, or excuse, excuse me, asked, will go to staff so the staff can work with the developer and get those questions answered and get them posted. So thank you very much for everyone that, that spoke tonight. Do you have, oh, Rob, sorry, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just one clarification, so the public and the developer and the council is on the same The, the public hearing is closed, and I just don't want anybody to misunderstand that the city now responding to the questions is a continuation of the public hearing. We're now just responding to what was brought up and the questions that were given. And so to the extent that someone thinks the public hearing is closed and therefore the questions can't be answered, that's not the case.
Thank you for that clarification. We will go to public hearing item 8E. Receive public comments only regarding amending the uniform fee schedule for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Bill Piper.
Thanks, Mayor. Larry Montgomery from the Finance Department is here to address this item.
Mayor and council, what you have in your packets tonight is titled, "City of West Jordan Uniform Schedule of Fees and Service Charges for the Fiscal Year 2019." What this document is, is a consolidated consolidation of all the fees and service charges throughout the city. Now, the purpose is, is to bring this document toward, to, to you for your approval so that we can post it and use it for the benefit of the citizens and the staff to have the, all these fees in one place. There are some changes that are noted in the fee schedule. Basically, this is usually called the Uniform Fee Schedule. You'll hear it referred to that. They are highlighted. There's not very many in here. Those changes consist of fees that you have recently approved in council meeting and passed, and it also, there are some typos and just some, as I was going through this, some identified mistakes from previous approved fees or charges that I've corrected. And as you'll note, that, when they were reviewed, the dates are noted in the right-hand column there. So what the purpose again is, is to present this to you. Upon your approval, I'll make those changes and update it. Now, as, as we go throughout the year, and if you make other changes, then the fee schedule will be updated, and then we will update where we post it. And once a year, it is the plan. It will be presented with the budget at, at the same time as the budget and approved, and those revenues would support the, the budget. If you have any questions.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm just wondering, there's a lot on the fee schedule, which I've brought up before.
Excuse me?
There, there's a lot of fees that I've, I've mentioned before on this fee schedule where the last revision is pre-2006, and I heard earlier in the meeting that we should go through this like every six years. I'm just wondering if we have a plan in place where a lot of these are revisited. I'm looking at, for example, on page four, everything on engineering permits were last revised pre-2006. So I'm assuming that's 2005 and earlier. And that's pretty much everything except the land disturbance permit, which was updated in 2011. And then we go down to engineering miscellaneous on Title 11, and all of those were last revised pre-2006, which I'm interpreting as 2005 or earlier. And then we have the business licensing we've already talked about, but that hasn't been changed since '06. What I saw in here on cremation that hadn't been changed for, I think it was on page five. What's that? And we even have some with animal control that are pre-2006, which again, I'm interpreting as 2005 or earlier, such as licensing, microchip, owner release fee, disposable of a dead animal. So do we have a schedule where we revisit these so that we're, we're looking at what the costs are? I, I know that, for example, the background check, the very top of page five, we charge $10. And at my employment, when we go get a background check, I'm paying about $35 from the state. So are we, are we not collecting $20 on a background check because the rates have increased and we've kept one that's pre-2006, which again, I say is 2005 or earlier?
Well, I personally can answer that for you. My task was to bring this document as a stand at this time, but it could be addressed. I, each area, you know, the, well, I'll let Bill answer.
Yeah, currently, they're just brought by the individual departments, and so we probably need to address some of these that haven't been addressed for a long time.
Okay, so that's probably, probably something we ought to look at. Maybe that could be a strategic plan goal. Just a thought. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Rob, you had a comment there?
I, maybe I could add to that. I know Mr. Brickie's intent, in part, in bringing this to you now, is exactly what Councilmember Anderson said, and that in the future, he's going to be asking the department heads on a regular basis to review these fees so that we don't show fees that are 10 and 12 and 14 years old. So the, the idea that was laid out for you in the beginning of a more consistent, regular review is what his plan is. And since he's not here, I thought I would throw that out you, too, because I know that's his intent.
Thank you. Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, along with Councilman Brandon Anderson, and my other thoughts are, I feel like this might be a little premature because we're changing, we're making a new fee for electric vehicles, we're changing our fees for business licenses, we're changing our impact fees, we're changing, what is another one? Shouldn't we do them all at the same time at once and maybe put this off another week or two, once we make those numbers, then put the, in here and then do this then? Is that not what we want to do?
Well, the uncertainty of when fees and, and charges will be changed is always with us, and we first begin talking about bringing this in June. And so, as I mentioned earlier, as those are approved, those will be, they will be added to this fee schedule, and, and then we will update them. But once a year, as a matter of making sure we have things in proper order, it will be brought to council, and, and you'll have the opportunity to review the whole thing. But we will have an ongoing update of our fees, and this document will be changed as those happen, as the council approves changes.
As we do those changes, though, we need to have a public hearing each time. Is that correct?
Well, for, yes, for your changes. I definitely wouldn't add anything to this without your approval.
Thank you.
Councilmember Whitelock.
So I agree with both Councilmember Anderson and Burton, and I, I couldn't feel comfortable voting on this on the 24th personally, because I think there are too many things in here that the council should discuss, and I'm going to throw this out just because it's me and I can. And this would have been a perfect example of why a work meeting would be helpful, because then we could have the open dialogue of what we feel about this and get the meat and bones taken care of instead of just say yes or no. So I know for me, if it comes up on the agenda on the 24th, I'm not voting on it because I don't feel comfortable for the reasons stated. The business license, we're going to change that. The water, we're changing. Too much of this is outdated, even for what we've already said okay to.
Councilmember Anderson.
Just for a point of clarification, maybe, Rob, you can, you can answer this. Is this, I know at, at my employment, we have to approve a fee schedule every year just as a matter of state law. Is this an adoption that we have to follow to comply with state law where we annually adopt a fee schedule, so we kind of have to do this, and then we modify it as what's been outlined?
That's a very good question, and Councilmember Whitelock's comment is a very valid comment. Let me, let me throw an idea out to you. The uniform, the idea of having a fee schedule is to consolidate all of the actions you've taken in all of these many areas into one spot. There's no legal requirement that you adopt a 10-page fee schedule and that every time you do that, you need to address every single fee. My experience has been that you will probably change this, and every city does, seven, eight, 10 times a year as different demands arise. And it's much like the city code. I have yet to find a city code anywhere that is ever up to date. It's just an impossible task. And so my suggestion is that, and I, I've talked with finance about this, is that some cities, when they change their fees, they never put this in front of the council, so the council doesn't know where they're at. My suggestion is rather than just change a fee, that we redline this and bring it back to you so you can see what's being changed, and in fact, keep in mind what some of you have said, and that is there are a lot of other areas to be addressed. I suspect if we tried to wait and adopt all of these updated at once, we're probably a 12-month process, if not more. It is a monumental task to do that, and if you wanted to do that, I suppose you could, but in doing that, you'll continue to fall behind in what some of these fees ought to be. The finance is saying need to be. that finance is saying need to be updated now. Um, I appreciate what councilmember Whitelock says. It is, I don't drink, so I won't say driven me to drink. But over the thirty-five years of practice, one of my greatest frustrations is that I can't find a city code anywhere that's up to date. None of them are. It's just, it's kind of like you can't hire enough police officers to take care of every crime. You can't hire enough lawyers to keep the city code up to date. And, uh, so that, that's just my perspective on it. You're obviously the decision-makers. And whatever you decide to do, the staff will work with it. But I guess that's how they'd respond to what you've raised are very, very valid concerns.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you. I have a, a question for, for either one of you, actually. And that is, at this point, how much of this is on the table? Um, this is an agenda item. This is here. If I scroll through here and I see, well, look at this, the, uh, engineering map sales, uh, fee is from pre-two thousand six and it's ten cents a page and two dollars a sheet. I just picked one just that I would happen to be looking at. And I think, well, you know, while we're here, let's raise that to twenty-five cents a page, five dollars a sheet and, uh, composite existing map could be ten dollars a sheet. And we'll just, just, we can discuss it and debate it and decide if that's a good thing or not. And, uh, stick that in here. As we have the fee schedule on the agenda, how much of this is, is open to, uh, for discussion right now and/or next?
Technically, it's only the, the staff is only bringing to the council for consideration the redline changes. The fee schedule is on there as a convenience to you so you can see it in the broader picture. But the staff isn't making a recommendation one way or the other. Those other fees are already in place. And they were adopted in July with the annual budget.
Right, right.
Does that answer your question, councilman?
Yes, and then as a follow-up, most of these redline fees are as a result of resolutions that we've already passed or ordinances that we've already passed, that now they're getting sucked into the fee schedule.
I think that is true. I can't tell you each one because I haven't looked at them.
Those, those fees are what you've passed recently, your water and your, uh, solid waste. And, uh, for, just a couple of lines. And then the housekeeping things that came to light as I looked at, this is my first time going through the document. And, uh, you know, if I find something, then I, I want to bring it up to you. But everything else, you've approved or prior council has approved.
Okay, so for example, one of those might be the, the pawn shops at two hundred dollars.
Now, that was something I found or was brought to my attention. And we, and, and as a follow-up to that, we went back and found where it was in the year two thousand six code.
Right.
We would not have brought that to you without having seen that.
Then so for pretty much all of these, there's been some council action or something that's already in place that we are now just ratifying and putting all into one nice neat package.
Yes.
Essentially.
And the intent is, is, you know, sure, like, business licensing will be, uh, those fees hadn't been adjusted since two thousand five, I believe. Nine? Uh, okay, I'm sorry. But, uh, that's just a case in point. As they need to be addressed, they should.
Yeah, so that's a good example, too, as a follow-up to what I was, um, what I was asking is, we looked at business license fees briefly tonight in this study on business license fees. And, uh, let's say in, in two weeks, we come back with changes that we do want to implement. Here's our new business license fee schedule. We'll vote on that. We'll approve that. And then at a future meeting, we'll vote on that again as we incorporate it into the uniform fee schedule, right? Is that essentially what that is?
Okay, Rob's got a comment there.
That's a great question. Um, and I didn't explain myself well. The way this should work in the future is that as new fees come to you, as I look now at this, the staff report and the resolution, what we probably should do is in the resolution, list which fees are being changed.
That would be nice.
And then include for you the uniform fee schedule redlined so it'll show what will the result be of you approving that resolution. And then I think that will dispel any confusion about are we adopting the schedule as a whole or are we just adopting those specific fees in the resolution?
Right, and were those fees previously adopted by some other resolution?
That's correct.
Because they're already in place. We changed the water fees, I don't know, a couple of months ago. So, for example. Okay, yeah, people are already paying them even though they're not on this schedule specifically.
Right.
For example. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Anderson, did you have another comment, Rob?
Nope. If that clarifies it, that's the direction we'll head in the future.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry to keep piping in. I, I, I would just, I'm, I'm hoping that our, our staff and departments, as they're, as they're looking at these fees, are looking at costs. I don't, I don't want to just create numbers. I would like to see a cost that, you know, for, uh, there was another one here I saw, like the lane closure fee of fifty dollars, which is pre-two thousand six. Um, are, are we assessing that? What, what is the cost that that's covering on a, is that for renting signs? Is that for, uh, s, staff in public works to do something? Does fifty dollars cover the cost of a lane closure fee, for instance?
Can I interject a little thought right here, councilmember?
You may.
And that is that, uh, I, I think we've gotten some direction or count, or, or, or city attorney has gotten some direction to have staff update, because each division has to update these.
Correct.
And, and I think what we were trying to look at tonight was what he explained, was what we should have done, what we should have seen was just the ones that are being changed tonight. Because we can take a look through that whole fifteen pages of things and everything that was done prior to whatever. And, and we can, and, and I think we can go on for another hour on this.
Oh, no, I'm-
But I think, I think we all know what we're trying to accomplish here. And that is to, uh, hear what needs to, you know, and maybe on the twenty-fourth, it can be come back because it's going to be on the agenda again to, to approve. Maybe that's where it says what we're approving that night is strictly these things. But the, uh, uh, the total fee schedule could be attached to that to say, this is what it is right now and this is what's already approved.
Correct, I, and that I understand. I ju, there was comments made about, you know, just starting to add stuff in. And I'm just suggesting that we look at what costs are. So, anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Rob?
Yeah, Mayor, just, uh, two more comments to councilmember Anderson's comment. The, the state law does require that there is a correlation between the fee charged and the actual costs to the city. So that, what, what you said, councilmember, is in fact what we should be doing. Uh, my second comment is, so there's no question, the, the, uh, strong suggestion to give you the uniform fee schedule redlined each time that you approve a fee came out of my office. So any confusion about that, it's not finances, it's my office's issue. We're the ones that recommended that. And we'll make that adjustment in how we do this so that the fee schedule is redlined, will be included each time so you can see where you're at overall. But we'll make sure that the resolution just includes the fees that are being proposed for change. Will that work? Okay. If you don't want us to bring the fee schedule back each time showing what the change, where it fits in, we can do that. Uh, it's just that in, in the past, I have had a lot of input from councils that they like to see the overall fee schedule with the redline changes so they know kind of what you, a couple of you said, where are we at in the overall scheme of assessing fees? But we'll make that adjustment so it's more clear on the twenty-fourth.
And I think it's really important that, that that whole schedule be reviewed to, to bring it, uh, up to date because if we're looking at what things cost us and what we're charging, there, there could be a huge disparity there that-
I will pass that along to Mr. Brickie.
Are there any other questions, uh, for staff? Okay, seeing none, then I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone present who would like to address council on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And we will move to our business items. Business item nine A, discussion and possible action regarding resolution eighteen dash one seventy-two authorizing the closure of New Bingham Highway from Airport Road to forty-eight hundred West from October sixteenth at five AM to October eighteenth at five AM for the removal and replacement of railroad crossing panels. Brian Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor. This item was previously approved in the la, on the September twenty-sixth council meeting. Um, due to the weather, the inclement weather that came up, the contractor had to cancel, um, due to him not being able to get asphalt. Um, he's, we came back to staff and requested, uh, this new closure to be approved um, in hopes that the weather's going to hold out so while they're batching asphalt, they can get the project done in two days. Um, we've recommended that he works pretty much twenty-four hours to, forty-eight hours to get the project done and open the road back up. So these are, these are his time constraints to work within. Um, so yeah, that's, we're bringing it back for approval, which this is previously approved.
Councilmember Burton.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution eighteen one seventy-two. And if, because of the weather causes them to reschedule again, to authorize Brian Clegg to arrange a new date without bringing it back to the council.
We have a motion. Do we have a second to the motion?
Second to the motion.
We have a motion by councilmember Burton, a second by councilmember Anderson discussing to the motion. And I like that motion, by the way. Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just one thing, and I'm not sure if this is Brian or if this is Kim, but can we just make sure that, um, once this is approved, that we get the information out to the people on the west side? Because I thought it was really good last time. I think most of them knew it was coming and they were ready for it. So as long as we get that out again and if you'll work with Kim to make sure that happens.
Definitely. We're ready to roll with that. So, thank you.
Okay, let's hope.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Riding?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
The votes, vote passes six in favor.
Item ten A, remarks. Do we have any remarks from councilmembers this evening? Councilmember Burton?
I don't have a remark. I was going to make a motion to go into closed session if we're ready. But I see councilmember Whitelock has remarks. Well, hold on.
Thank you. I, I just want to add my voice to development agreement for this parcel that we've been discussing. I think it's a really good idea and there are things in there that I think will go better than others. So I'm very much in favor that, of that and hope that those that were here heard that. Thank you for suggesting it.
So you pulled your motion.
It's back on the table. So I, I move that we go into closed session for the reasons listed on the agenda and come back here at- Yes, and then come back here afterwards to vote on six B.
Uh-huh. Councilmember Jacob?
I'll second and then offer an amendment because strategy or the security, city security is not on the agenda for something to discuss in closed session. So we need to add that as a reason to go to closed session.
Thank you. I, I will-
That is okay.
Accept that amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second with the amended motion. And we need a roll call vote?
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Riding?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.